All righty, we're gonna start the Malibu Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2017. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Commissioner Uring.
Here.
Vice Chair Marx.
Here.
Chair Pearson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Why, thank you very much. Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, I missed roll call.
I did?
No, you just did.
We just did roll call.
Yeah.
You even said here. Please send John an email so your members to look at roll call. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Trevor, will you lead us, please? We are now done with the Pledge of Allegiance.
No.
We have a motion on approval of the agenda.
I move the agenda with item 4B before item 4A. Because it's gonna be a long evening and I figure that without 4B being approved, 4A is moot.
Do we have a second? Hearing none, I'm looking for another approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in dissent? None in dissent. Okay, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 8th, 2017, with the amended agenda posted on December 13th, 2017.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Ceremonial presentations are continually non-existent. Do we have any written and oral communication from the public on items that are not on the agenda? Possibly. Yes, Richard Soule, you're up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Richard Soule. I'm a local architect and resident. I'm here to address the board, to share with all of you my opinion that there are some inefficiencies that have developed, some duplication in the entitlement processes which I think need attention and updating. Let me explain. When I first was interning for local architect Doug Rucker back in the 70s, there was only one body of government you had to approach for entitlements, and that was the County of LA. Then the Coastal Act was approved by the voters of California, and that required that you go to the state as well as the county to obtain your entitlements. Then Malibu Incorporated and basically supplanted or substituted the County of LA jurisdiction for permits, but we still had the state agency. But the watershed moment was when the Coastal Commission required, wrote an LCP for the city of Malibu and had forced it for Malibu to practice it, which it originally didn't want to do, but eventually it adopted it with some amendments that are still ongoing. What I'm saying to you is that, and by the way, when the Coastal Commission first came into being, it wasn't that difficult. It cost $200 to file an application, and if you processed it in timely fashion, you could get, submit it to the hearing date, took about six weeks. And the other benefit was at that time is that you could submit both to the state organi, the state level for CDP as well as the county building department. So you really saved a lot of time. Now we get to Malibu incorporating and having to adopt and enforce the LCP, and we find that Malibu is still using the paradigm when the two governing bodies, bodies were two. It was a state level and a county level. Now they're one. The city of Malibu enforces the CDP, reviews it, and it also gives out permits. And I think there's no reason why we, they should be approached in a linear fashion. As an applicant representing homeowners and my fellow colleagues, architects and engineers, we have to go to the city geologist, the city geotechnical engineer, the city health department, this Department of Public Works, the city biologist and the city planning department twice. And basically it extends our fees, adds to our clients' fees in the area between $10,000 and $100,000. It adds time in the area of six to 18 months. Had they been done concurrently and we look at this thing anew and realize that the CDP, excuse me, the LCP is really a sophisticated zoning ordinance, it's not something to be afraid of. We, we should process it as if we go to a planning counter like we did with the county. I'm going to take this message to the city attorney and to the city manager as well, and I thank you for listening to my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, and I appreciate you following up on it. I think, I don't know if you've written all this down, but I know the process is frustrating for pretty much everybody, so I appreciate your input. Anyone else want to address the council on items not on the agenda? No? Okay, moving forward. Jeff, any items?
Yes, Bonnie, the dark sky ordinance. Any idea when we might see that in the light of day?
Our, our plan was to bring that back in the first quarter of 2018, but we're going to need to work with the city council on setting some priorities just because they have, there are some other legislative items that are, the list of things is stacking up, and we just want to make sure that we're addressing things in the order that the council wants. As, as you know, we've got the marijuana ordinance, formula retail, short-term rentals, the dark sky ordinance, we've got an LCP amendment for parking lots as a permitted use, and there's a handful of other things I'm not thinking of right this second. So we just want to recalibrate with the city council and make sure we're doing things in the order they want. They have expressed that as a priority item, but it was in light of where we were at that time, so I just want to make sure where we're at today with that.
And under, under a recalibration process, what do you foresee happening with that ordinance? I'm just trying to get, I mean, it's been, as you know, years, and we're just trying to get a sense of, I keep sending you articles about.
Right.
Any, any feel?
You know, I don't know how that stacks up with short-term rentals or formula retail. Those are the, the other two things, the marijuana ordn, well, and that, the marijuana ordinance too. There's some time sensitivity to that. We'll be talking about that with the council again on, on Wednesday. So I, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
John?
Speaking of long-term things, where does the city stand on getting the, the land for La Paz and the finalization of La Paz's application?
There were some, some issues with some easements on that property that are being resolved. Hopefully it'll be completed soon, but that was the holdup, is there were some issues that need to be, some easements need to be dealt with that were on the parcels to be given to the city.
So they can't start construction until they satisfy that?
No, they, they need to transfer the property.
And they, they have a time limit on their development agreement. So if that doesn't happen before then, it's just all over?
Well, the development agreement has its terms about when it expires, and when it expires, it expires.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Marx?
Nothing today.
I got a couple just inquiring minds in the city want to know, what's going on at the Grenada space right now?
Actually, don't have any idea.
Okay, what's under full demo? Something's going on in there. They've been definitely tearing down all, looks like all the interior walls or, I don't know what. So I can't tell if they're prepping it or.
Be happy to look into it. I don't know. I mean, I'm not aware of anything that has come through the planning department. I don't know if anything's, hopefully something's been applied for, through the building safety department.
They're, they've been doing a lot of work over the shopping, their painting, parts of it. I mean, maybe they're just cleaning the place up, who knows?
All right, they're pulling out a lot of.
Yeah, there's some things that don't require an actual permit, but I don't know.
Right, it may be, but it looked like a lot of wall, interior walls were coming out there when I went by, but maybe I'm wrong. And, oh, there's more. The movie theater? What's going on at the movie theater?
The movie theater space is in the process of being turned into a different type of retail space. They have applied for a planning clearance and are in the process of doing tenant improvements there.
And I, people just, I don't know why they're asking me all these questions. Like I know, I'm hoping you know, Dean in DeLuca, is it still coming?
As far as I know, they had a planning clearance approved for that space. I'm not sure what the delay is in actually moving that forward. It's not anything from, that I'm aware of from a permitting standpoint.
I've told people not to order their Christmas ham. It probably won't happen this year. Okay, that, that's it on that side. Bonnie, what do you have?
I just wanted to mention that City Hall will be closed for, well, will be open for a half day this Friday for Christmas Eve, and a week later, a half day on Friday, the 29th for New Year's Eve. And I also wanted to mention, related to Mr. Soule's comments, the planning department has for several weeks been working on, actually longer than that, some new processes and procedures and revamping of, of internal things to improve our efficiency. We're working with expeditors and applicants on that, and we'll be also reaching out to the planning commission on some things to do with staff reports and stuff like that going forward, all in an effort to make us more transparent and responsive and efficient in, in doing our work. And I'll just conclude say, by saying Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to everybody. Hope everybody has wonderful holidays, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Trevor, you have anything else to add?
Happy holidays.
I would, I would, well, thanks. I would also add, it was probably the best holiday party at the city that I can remember. The food went up a whole notch. There's still no alcohol though, which I think is a shame. And the music and art were fantastic too, as well as the wonderful conversations for those of you that were there. So let's move ahead. Consent calendar.
Are you gonna pull?
Okay, I would like on the consent calendar to pull 3B2, 3B4, and 3B5. Anyone else have anything else to add? Okay.
I'll move 3B1 and 3.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, aye? You good with it?
Good.
Okay, we're moving forward. So 1 and 3 are fine, and now we're on to 3B2. We have all sorts of stuff here related to, all sorts of things. Can I have a staff report on 3B2, please?
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the planning commission. Would you like a, a full staff report, or do you have specific questions?
I don't think we need a full one that I'm aware of, but, so just a little, I don't know, whatever satisfied Trevor, staff report?
Okay, I don't have a, oh, I think, oh, this is the applicant's PowerPoint presentation, I'm assuming. So this is a request for a fifth time extension for a CUP at 22729 Pacific Coast Highway. The original application was approved in 2010, and previous extensions were approved in 2012, 2014, 2015, and 2016. This application was set to expire on June 1st, 2017. The applicant did submit the time extension request prior to the extension expiring, which was, the submittal date was April 24th, 2017. Staff is recommending denial of the extension for, for numerous reasons. It was discussed in the staff report. I think the, the most substantive reason being that it appears that the applicant would like to move forward with demolition of the canopies that are currently on site, and then wait to see what happens with a pending hotel application that the staff is reviewing right now. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Disclosures on this item?
I read the material that Norm Haney submitted, which is part of the record, so it doesn't add anything to what's already before us.
Stephen?
I participated in the hearing in 2010.
Nothing to show.
I met with Norm and discussed his letter that he submitted, so I think that's probably all on the record. I don't know that I gained anything else outside of what was written there. Questions of staff?
Yeah. I guess this is a Trevor question. According to staff, the applicant wants to keep this application to demolish the canopies and then wait around and see what happens with the rest of the project. Can we extend only the canopy demolition?
I think the, the demolition of the canopies is part of the scope of work for the coastal development permit. I'm not sure that we could separate that.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to separate that out. You could apply separately for a demolition permit if there's a health or safety issue.
Go ahead.
Staff relies on LIP Section 13.6.1C, which says that the planning manager shall not accept for filing a separate application for development, which is the subject of a permit application already pending before the city. Is the staff's position that this permit, which is in existence now, which is, for which an extension is being requested, is an application pending before the city?
The, no, the extension request is related to the entitlement that's already been obtained.
Then how is LIP Section 13.6.1 relevant?
The, the other applications that the applicant has submitted are what we, what was being referenced in the staff report.
But they're not before us tonight.
Not tonight.
Question. We got the policy on extensions, and the, the definition, the architect dying is change in architecture, so that, that is not a reason for extension, according to the policy?
The policy states that a change in architect is not in and of itself a reason for extension. It would, a combination of circumstances that surround that could enhance the basis for due cause. So that, yeah, that's what's in the policy.
Okay, and then I assume that financial dislocation in 2010 is, now that the Dow's 25,000 is no longer something we can consider?
Let me take a moment to just clarify that the, the purpose of creating an extension, a policy for reviewing extensions was to set out some, some parameters that the commission could use and staff could use in evaluating requests for extension, and that the public could take into consideration when submitting their request for extension. The, the policy is meant to provide a little more guidance around some of the terms that are, that exist in the LCP that aren't defined, like due cause and what would be a reasonable extension of time. What we also included in the policy is that, well, I, I don't think we said it explicitly in the policy, but it is, I should just say that it is a policy, and the commission is free to exercise this discretion about, number one, if you believe or agree with Mr. Haney's contention that you should pretend like the policy isn't in place because the extension request was submitted in April, you're free to consider that if you like. It's, it's just a policy. It's not, it doesn't tie your hands about how you consider the evidence.
The policy is, is there to aid you in your evaluation of whether due cause exists in this situation. That's the ultimate determination that you're making here.
Public.
Okay. Quickly, I, I just have a question. It's come up a couple times in a couple items here. Per LCP policy number five, so as of this meeting, is the first time I've seen we've adapted the new extension definition?
Um, I believe.
Last week.
I think the last meeting.
I wasn't here.
First time for you.
First time for, for you. Yes.
Okay. And so the application of that policy is just, there's no grandfathering on it. It's just straight into it?
It's, it's there as a tool for you to use and apply as you, as you'd like to.
Okay. Any more questions, or let's, let's open the public hearing here. Okay, we have a couple of speakers. We have the applicant team. Norm, it looks like you have five minutes? If I'm not mistaken?
No, this isn't a question.
I guess, what, I don't, that's a great question. We don't normally have. So does an applicant in this case get 15 minutes, or is it normally three? How we treat this?
I believe it's per the agenda instructions or procedures that items in Section B are three minutes. Each speaker is three minutes.
Okay, so you have five minutes at this point, and we'll ask you questions to go beyond that. And we did all receive your material.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Norm Haney, representing Norm Haney. First of all, I, I question whether a policy can be applied that modifies the definition of LCP policy number five before the Coastal Commission's actually approved that policy. That, that's the first part. Let me move on quickly, though, to discuss what's in that policy. One of the things is considered due cause is financial hardship. Well, for the first four years of the seven years that we're considering here, I could not get a construction permit, and no one could get a construction permit. It's very difficult today to get a construction permit. In order to pay the $150,000 necessary to process the plans and get to the point where the permit is to be issued, I had to sell a piece of property in order to come up with the money. So that's number one, and that is defined as due cause. Their second, though, is Mr. Barzakini's unexpected death. Now, I've read this closely, and the implication is that the owner of the property decided to change architects and went from one architect to another, and of course, had to make a deal with the present architect for the copyrights and the plans unless the plans are being changed completely. That was not the case with me. I was very happy with the plans that Mr. Barzakini prepared, and he was sick for almost a year and a half before he passed away. So during that time, which was a year and a half after the project was approved, I was unable to move forward with the plans. And I did not want to change architects, but you don't have any choice when your architect passes away, and there's nothing in your contract providing for what happens to the copyrights. I could not find another architect to take over. I didn't change architects. I lost the architect completely. As a consequence, I worked with Mr. Barzakini's son, Nick, and Nick has a lot of experience in residential development, but virtually no experience in commercial. After four plan checks, I had to go to a professional plan checking company, M6, and ask for their help. And they worked another five plan check processes. We were able to get the permit. Now, that's a third reason here. It says, basically, the applicant has exercised due diligence in the efforts to commence the project, such as contracting for and completing necessary studies, reports, drawings, plans to pursue and complete the plan check process. Forty-six pounds of plans. Plumbing plans, structural engineering plans, electrical plans, architectural plans, all stamped as approved, subject to the signature by a surrogate architect. I have found one. I will pay him $10,000 to review the plans and stamp them. Then I'm prepared to pay the city $15,000 to $20,000 for the permit so that I can commence construction. That is right under due cause. If anybody has met due cause, it's me for three different reasons that I've given you, assuming that policy number five is effective. Now, if this application was heard three months after the application was filed for the extension, I wouldn't be here tonight. The previous policy would have been in place, which is that the development standards have not changed. And in fact, the planning department has stated the development standards have not changed. So I meet policy number five, whether or not it's supposed to be effective. Now, there's one other issue about the hotel. With regard to the hotel, I have made it very clear to everyone 100% that that's what I really want. But I don't want to lose the years and $350,000 I put into this set of plans. And if for any reason I don't get the hotel approved, I, I don't know what it would be, but, you know, things pop up. I don't want to lose the effort that I put here. Now, I do expect to remove the blight, the visual blight of the canopies. The, the only, by the way, the only structure in Malibu that's ever been defined as a visual blight. And to do what work is necessary, I expect to be able to get the permit for the hotel within the next 12 months. And I will continue working on this until that happens. And then I think that there are so many benefits to the city, I, I'm hoping that the city will approve it. So those are my presentations. I'm available for, I had a PowerPoint, but I expected to get 15 minutes and I only had five. And thank you very much for whatever extra time you gave me.
Thank you, Norm.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. One more speaker, Pat Healy.
Hello, I'm Pat Healy. And Mr. Haney just said he met all the development requirements. Well, he did not in the original application at all. And the staff report alludes to it by saying there was a unique interpretation of the open space and landscaping. And Mr. Haney, in this project, as it's designed, has not met that or even come close to it. This landscaping plan, we're potted plants on the roof. There's really nothing but in front of the structure as proposed, but parking spaces. The project itself has rooftop parking, which he considers the open space. We're in an area where there is, near the Malibu Pier, near Surf Rider Beach. It, PCH is a, is a scenic highway. And this building does nothing to enhance that area where tourists are, where residents go to the pier to enjoy the restaurants and everything. And so he never met the original landscaping and open spaces. He didn't even try to do it then. And so for that reason alone, even though he spent money proceeding with the plans, it never met the requirements and you're setting a bad precedent if you extend this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Do we have anyone else who wants to address us on this item? Okay, see no one closing the public hearing back here. Comments, discussion?
I'll start, I guess. We're, we're being told that seven years after the crisis on Wall Street, it was still impossible to get financing, even though interest rates were practically zip. And, and that one, unfortunately, I can't buy. Now, what Pat talked about was what I consider the single most, the single worst decision ever made by the planning commission in the 17 years I've been coming to it. It directly violated a section of the LCP. And at that time, we did ignore a lot of things, but that one was just a direct violation. Now, granted, the, the planning commission voted to do it, but it's a fact. It says in the LCP, you may not count a building as open space and landscaping. So that, what I see is very little progress, even though Norm has progressed with these plans. He didn't even start until seven or eight years, seven, six, seven years after he got the permit. So I can't support this.
Hang on. Jeff?
You're not looking at me, Bonnie. I had a conversation with Bonnie and during this week, the first thing I looked at when I saw this was that paragraph about how the original office project was approved under a unique interpretation. And I said, you know, it has been the absolute unvarying policy of the staff, of the planning commission, city council, to only consider the issue of due cause and to not go back and look at the merits of the original application, the original permit. And there's a lot of good reasons for that. The main one being that if you open that door, as John wants to do and as Pat wants to do, we'll relitigate and retry every controversial project that ever comes before us. Every time there's an application for an extension, we'll go back and we're going to review them all. So that's why I was upset when, when I saw the staff report, because it's completely out of order to go back and reconsider the merits of the original project. Everybody knows that. So that's my comment.
Well, I think what's interesting about that comment is I wasn't there for the original one, so leaves me at actually wanting someone to sit here and take 20 minutes and tell me the story, but I'm going to refrain from that. So Steve, did you have a, you had a point?
Same question. You just, I mean, I wasn't here either. And I'd, I'd like to know sort of what, is, is the only objection you have the, the open space on the roof?
Me?
Yeah. I'm just trying to understand. I wasn't here when the project.
No, I, I, that's an aside. I agree with Jeff that we don't relitigate things. I said it was approved by the planning commission. My only statement was is what I said. It was the worst decision I've ever seen. Now, they came close with the green wall, but this one was even worse because it was specifically stated you could not do that. But it doesn't matter here. What I'm considering here is, this is seven years after it was approved.
But you made it sound like it's influencing your vote.
No, it's not. This is seven years and nothing was done for quite a number of years. And that's, that's what I'm basing it on, not the fact that it never should have happened.
So, okay, let me, I just want to, there's obviously a lot that went on that I wasn't privy to. So you, part of what you're saying is you want to deny it because nothing happened for all the times we did give extensions? But now he's made, trying to make a case that he's been working on it, but he shouldn't get this, this extension because of the past times he did?
No, what I'm, what I'm really, well, just to flavor that a little. When did we never, then when did we ever turn down an extension? Okay? There's a difference between a rubber stamp and a review. And we're now reviewing things. We now have guidelines. We now have direction from city council. And before, I cannot remember an extension that was denied.
If I could just respond to Commissioner Jennings, what I said on the phone and what I'll say here is that it wasn't the, the mention of the unique circumstances for the approval of the landscape and open space was just for purposes of talking about the noteworthy aspects of the project. It wasn't meant to substitute for due cause. We have explained, you've expressed interest in the past about basements and we have explained in a, let's see, a project a couple of months ago that had an extension request in a similar circumstance where the, the rules about the project hadn't changed, but the policy about how we look at basements had changed. And so this was presented in this way for the same reason, just to give you an idea of how things evolve over time with respect to a project. It's, it's absolutely up to you to decide whether you feel like there's due cause in this particular case.
Mr. Marks?
Yeah, Norm, I had a couple of questions from what you had mentioned. First, I'm just trying to understand timeline. So the paperwork here, I would have guided something from '09. Your first approval was in '06, though? Or what was the timing of your, your CDP? No, it was, what was the timing of your first CDP being approved?
The, the first approval was in 2010.
Ten.
And Mike got sick approximately a year after that and passed away in 2013.
So the, there was, so your, your statement is that there was financing trouble at the start of the project.
Right.
You had a, obviously, problem with the architect that happened around the same time. So are those basically kind of, since they're overlapping, it's really the same problem? I mean, it was, you know.
I, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But for two years, I tried to find another architect that would take over the plans and I couldn't find one because the copyright to the plans belonged to Mike Barzakini. And nothing in the contract allowed it to be moved. Additionally, most architects will not take over another architect's plans. They want to do their own. I didn't realize, I started, I started over two years ago trying to pull the permit when, when I got the last extension. And I didn't realize that Nick Barzakini simply didn't have the knowledge. It took me four plan checks before I realized I needed to hire additional help.
Right.
And I did that.
So there was a period of overlap, but then because of that forced change in architect, you still had kind of knock-on effects that went past that financing.
Yeah, basically, two years past his death, I tried to find an architect to take over. And so with the first three years and the second two years was five years. And I just jumped into it at that point with great, I said, great vigor, but basically, that's what it was. I was on it all the time. M6 came in, by the way, they actually bid for the job to do plan check for the city of Malibu. They do Calabasas and Santa Clarita and other cities. I paid them to help Nick do the work to, to get the permit. It took them five sessions. And if you, if you read their letter, they're very specific, that, that I diligently pursued getting the permits, paid for it, and I have them right over there. All they have to do is get an architect to stamp them. And if this is approved, I can pull the building permits.
Then on, now to the 43 pounds of paperwork.
Forty-six.
Thank you. So for that, you know, I know you, you stated your desires to go to hotel. You still get that approved, et cetera. What of that stack would still be valid if you went that direction? Or alternatively, what of that stack would still be valid if you had to reapply? How much of that could be reused or is it all throwaway?
Well, all the geology reports would continue to be valid. The wastewater treatment system and the methodology for that would be valid. The drainage would be close to valid. It's, the setback is further for the hotel. It's another 40% further than what that set of plans would allow. So much of, much of the technical things would continue to be valid, although the actual building itself would be substantially changed.
Right. And then to Bonnie, just, I know we've talked about this before, kind of theoretically, but you know, if, if Norm had to reenter, being denied an extension, and he stayed with the same plans on that building, do we have a kind of guidelines or input on what that overhead would be in terms of kind of impact to the project or applicant?
Are you looking for the cost or the time or both?
Yeah, just kind of, just a sense of what that impact is.
It would be a similar review from a planning standpoint to what's happened already or in the past in terms of the other departmental reviews that need to happen. As Norm said, a lot of that work that's already been done would form the basis of, of any updates or anything like that that needed to happen. I don't have a good sense of what the cost would be in terms of fees and, and that sort of thing.
One, one other thing I'd like to mention, if it's okay. You, you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for every commissioner, including John, especially the hard work that he does. However, this exceptional deal that we were talking about, theoretically not applicable now with regard to open space on top of the roof overlooking the ocean, that's where people were to sit and, and watch the ocean and have their lunch. And let's, let's be honest here. Santa Monica College came in and got a height that's substantially higher than 28 feet and they put green on the top of their roof and that was okay. And there are other examples, the, the green wall that was mentioned that John disagrees with. And I'm not sure that that's not reasonable. But what was approved back then was reasonable, given the circumstances of the property and the, the, the situation. I mean, everybody knows that you can't landscape 40% of your property and have an open space for 25% and meet the parking requirement and build a reasonable building. So people find ways to make it happen. It doesn't mean it's not visually nice to look at. But according to John, it doesn't meet the hardened definition of a standard. And I hope we're not going to go there. Read the policy. I did what I was supposed to do. I did do the due diligence and met the requirement for due cause.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you. Bonnie? Norm also writes in here that the staff delayed my hearing until after the policy change. It was the staff that prepared the policy change. The policy that was in effect at the time the extension was formally, was formally requested is what the applicant had a right to rely on and should be the policy as applied. Especially the staff did not process the request for more than eight months. A response to that, out of curiosity?
My understanding is that the applicant was in the process of pursuing building permits and that part of the reason for not scheduling the hearing right away was to allow that to happen. But since that didn't happen and since we were obtaining these other applications, receiving these other applications for other types of projects on the site, that's, it was a combination of things that contributed to the delay in getting the hearing scheduled.
Thank you.
On that point, though, before that policy came out, and it is a policy, did the planning commission have the right to deny an extension because nothing had happened in four years?
The planning commission always has the discretion to approve or deny any extension.
Okay, well, Steve, you got somewhere?
Norm, the denial, let's assume for sake of discussion, there is a denial. Does this, does that, that doesn't impact your hotel project, does it? Or if it does, how?
No, no, it, 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 it doesn't impact the hotel process. No, no, it, 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 it doesn't impact the hotel process, project. What it, what it does mean, though, if for any reason the hotel is denied, I've lost two, three and a half, four hundred thousand dollars and have to start the process all over again and for no reason at all.
And you feel reasonably comfortable, or I think that's what you said, that if you came back with that project today, as it is defined right now, you'd have problems getting it approved? Is that a, is that what you said?
What I've said is that the current commercial standards do not work the way it's interpreted by the staff. Now, the staff recommended approval of planting the roof of Santa Monica College with green, and that apparently is okay if it's Santa Monica College, but it's not okay for anyone else. And, and it, it's that, it's the, and, and it's the same thing with the green walls, and it's the same thing with Whole Foods, that the system doesn't work. So you have to find a way that meets the intent of it. And the intent is that people have open space to enjoy, whether it's on the rooftop overlooking the ocean or whether it's on the ground. Ninety-nine percent of all development standards in other cities include parking facilities, parking lots as open space, not the city of Malibu. So you're basically taking sixty-five percent of the property away and expecting someone to use fifteen percent of it for the building, leaving only twenty percent for parking. And then you don't want parking structures. Those, those are my comments. I did meet the standard, the, the due cause standard specified in policy number five.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
There's clearly a lot of history on this project, which I was not a part of. It seems to have fed pretty heavily into this for some reason. I would say, for me, I, I think from what we normally see, this would warrant maybe one last year, from what I'm used to, or just trying to erase all the other stuff because it's not part of this. So that's the way I would be leaning right now. But either way, I'm looking for a motion from somebody on something.
I move staff's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Before we do that, I have one quick question for Bonnie. There was something in the, "Depending on the Planning Commission's action with respect to the extension, staff may require the applicant to withdraw one or more of the applications." What does that mean?
Well, we'll have to take a look at, it's, it's very unusual for an applicant to be pursuing two projects at one time on a property. That's, I can't think of another example. So we're going to have to look at that and see what, what makes sense to keep active. I mean, there's a, there's an application for a CUP amendment to change the office building into a car museum type of facility that's also pending, as well as the zone changes for the hotel project. And then there's a CUP for, with this, this interim use of the car wash, that, you know, that, that doesn't seem to cause a, a major problem. But the two, like, major entitlements at the same time is, is unusual.
But that's not before us here, correct?
No, right.
Okay. Do we have a second to John's motion? Hearing none, do I have another motion?
I'm going to move that the extension be granted, one-year extension be granted.
We have a second.
I will second.
I will second it, unless we do something. Did you want to wait before we vote?
Yeah, I mean, Norm, where's, where's, Norm? You said you think you can get your permits for the hotel within a year. I'm comfortable with that. Because I understand the process, I mean, it has been a very long time, all right? I understand all the, you know, speed bumps you've hit getting to where you are.
I'm very comfortable that I will be able to. I have spoken to the executive director of the Coastal Commission. He did not hesitate that he, he would approve it as soon as it was on his desk. I'm not gonna, I mean, he, he doesn't approve anything. It's the planning, it's the California Coastal Commission that approves things, but his recommendation will be for approval. A lot of it depends on how quickly the staff here can, can move forward. The, but I believe that I can get all the things that the staff needs for approval in terms of the Health Department, the Biology Department, Public Works Department, Geology, all that will be completed within the next two months. And so it will be on the Planning Commission's, Planning Staff's desk for movement. And it depends on how long it takes them to put it in front of you. If, if I could make an application to the Coastal Commission at the same time, I would do it. But I have to wait until the, you approve it or deny it, and then go to the City Council, and they have to approve it, and then it'll go immediately to the Coastal Commission because there's a zone change involved. Hopefully, the hotel doesn't go to them, just the zone change. But I feel comfortable, I'm going to do everything that is in my power to make it happen within the next nine months. Thank you.
Okay.
Bonnie, we have a hotel, a project tonight. When was that applied for?
That project's been through a few iterations, so that's not a real clear kind of question.
When was the last iteration?
The coastal development, development permits were submitted in September, I think, but it came in initially as an APR and, you know, more than a year ago, and maybe two years ago with, and then we went through the process with the Zone Text Amendment as a possible solution. So that, that one's had a few different iterations.
Okay, so what, what I'm really asking is, what is the reality with your department pushing everything forward and not being able to handle something like a?
I think it's a real challenge to bring, to bring this, to bring a, a commercial hotel project with rezoning back within a year. I think that's a challenge, but, I mean, obviously, we're going to do whatever we can to move all of our things ahead.
We have a roll call, please?
The motion is to grant the requested twelve-month extension?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Commissioner Uring?
No.
Vice Chair Marks?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, I move, we, staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
I thought no one was going to second again. That'd be really weird. Roll call, please, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
No.
Motion.
Okay, motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we're now at three, three B four, Extension Coastal Development Permit Number 10-009, Site Plan Review Number 10-006, and Demolition Permit Number 10-011. A fifth request to extend the Planning Commission's approval of an application for construction of a new single-family residence and associated development. We have a, oh, hi, Rich. Yes, a report, please.
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the Planning Commission. What you have before you this evening is an extension request to extend a permit for a fifth year. This permit was originally approved for a, kind of a remodel of the main residence that exists on the site that was going to be demolished partially and turned into an accessory structure, a few accessory structures, and then a new single-family residence built. The applicant did enter the plan check process. That, those permits that were applied for have expired as, based off of our, review of our records. And to date, no other work has taken place that's related to the coastal development permit on the site. There were a couple permits pooled, two permits pooled, for one for a kitchen and bathroom remodel and another for doors and windows. I can give you guys the dates if you like. However, with those permits that were pooled, they were not related to the coastal development permit. And those were the applicant, the property owner sent an applicant to the Building and Safety Department. Those permits were then granted at the counter. They were not reviewed by the Planning Department or reviewed based off of the coastal development permit. So to date, that is the only work that's taken place on the site. The applicant has gone through, as you've noticed in the request, they did change architects a couple of times. The most current architect was hired this year, and the, I believe the staff report contains an error which was corrected with the correspondence as of the date of hiring of that architect. And the current architect for the project is trying to pursue a substantial conformance review approval to redesign the project a bit and maintain the existing residence as it currently is configured, and rather than build a new residence, build an accessory structure on the footprint of the previous approval for the new residence. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is present this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any disclosures? Anyone on this?
I did get a call from, I, I know the property. I did get a call from Skylar Peak, the mayor. All he asked me to do was take a close look at the project, and we didn't discuss the details at all.
Okay, thank you. And no other disclosures? Okay, questions of staff?
Yes, Richard, you, you said it was, this was the fifth year. This is the seventh year, isn't it? Wasn't this approved in September 2010? Remind me wrong, this is three before, right?
The original permit would have had a two or three-year life, so...
So it was extended five times.
This is the fifth extension, I think.
So it's seven years. And...
Yes.
It said the original owner bought it in 2011, and it's the deepest, the Pasquale Di Nisco Family Trust. Is that still true?
That is the current owner, yes.
Okay.
My question would be, I just need clarification on the extension versus what they're actually doing. So Bonnie and I actually briefly talked about it earlier. I did not disclose that because obviously I didn't learn anything, because I'm asking it again. So they're doing a remodel now that is much smaller in scope than the original approval was for, correct?
The original project called for changing the existing house on the property to a guest house, so taking away like nine hundred square feet of it, and then building a new residence in a different location on the site. What has become the current proposal for the applicants is to, is that they've already remodeled the entire existing residence and now are proposing to build, to keep that as the, the primary residence and build a new accessory structure that's of a different size, and it happens to be smaller, but in a different loca, in the previous location on the site. So it's, instead of the existing house becoming a guest house and getting a new house, you're getting a remodeled existing residence and a different accessory structure. So in, in our view, it's a different project.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to get, because I'm still kind of confused. But so this CDP that, that they're asking to extend?
Richard does, I'm sorry to interrupt, Richard does have some slides if you'd like to see more of a visual kind of explanation.
Yeah, in a second. So this CDP doesn't in any way relate to what they're doing now, or it does in some ways?
The applicant is, is arguing that it does relate, but in our opinion, it doesn't. The, they came in for the remodel that's just, that's, I don't know if it's finished yet or they're working on it now, but they basically didn't use any of the CDP entitlements in order to pursue that remodel. It didn't come through planning for a comparison to the existing plans or anything like that. It just went straight to building safety, essentially. So it really isn't a part of what you saw and you approved.
So if we deny this extension, it has no impact at all on what they're attempting to do right now, or it does?
What, they would need to either, they would need to submit a CDP for the new, or an APR, I don't know what, whether it would be exempt from a CDP or not, for the accessory structure.
And in your opinion, they have to do that no matter what? Or, or could it be captured under this current CDP?
I don't believe it fits under this current CDP because it's, it's different. It's a, it's a remodel of the existing house and a, an accessory structure, not a guest house and a new house.
Richard, do you know if the, the project they're currently working on requires a CDP or an APR, or what is it?
This new, given the location of where the site is, it could require a coastal development permit because it's going to fall within the appeal jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission, and the size of the addition may cause it.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, so that's yet to be determined. So we're treating this extension request completely separate, and we're not even sure if it, it may possibly relate partially to the project, which you don't think it does, but we're not sure. Is that where we're at?
No, my, my opinion is that it's a different project.
Okay, thank you. John?
Can you put it up? My question would be, is it in the same footprint?
This is the, the site plan as proposed in the most recent substantial conformance. So would you, looking at the site from left to right, the green structure that is on the left-hand side of the property, that you see there in the lower half of the screen, that's the existing residence. So that was proposed to be, nine hundred square feet of it demolished, and it was going to be used as, for various accessory structures, a second unit and, I want to say, an office and a garage. To the, the right of the property, you see another box, say, three colors make up that one area. That is where the proposed residence was approved to be built. So what the architect, architect has done, they have kept the bulk and mass of this within the footprint and within the height and bulking and massing of what was previously approved, and it is smaller. It's roughly a two thousand square foot structure. And from talking to the architect, if this were made larger, I think you could see where it calls out one area as a, a guest unit, but it really doesn't meet the definition of a guest unit because it does not have a bedroom. It's more of just an open floor plan. It's more of a theater area. So with some tweaking of the plans, this, this possibly could get into the realm of an administrative plan review, if that were the case, getting to your question, Chair, Chair Pearson. That's something we could work with the architect on. But as you can see to Commissioner Mazza's question, they do, the, the proposal does fall within the massing that was previously approved.
How about the square footage, the net, the net square footage between the two?
The square footage, the, the house through the remodel that was done was not modified. That square footage has remained. They're not going to be over their total development square footage. However, the proposed structure, as I mentioned, was two thousand square feet. Let me jump back.
Well, the real question is, there, the proposed new version is over the TDSF that was approved?
No, it won't go over the TDSF for the site, and what was approved was a...
What was approved?
Okay, for what was approved, as you see in this slide, was a fifty-two-hundred square foot structure with a, a roughly eight hundred square foot basement. The proposed redesign is a roughly, just under two thousand square feet. So it's a third of what was approved.
So my, my question is, it's the same, same footprint? So my, my question is, it's the same, same footprint, smaller size, reduced footprint, same, same height. So why isn't that substantial conformance? I can see if they were outside of the footprint or it was bigger. But is it because they have different amount of fixtures or what's missing on substantial conformance?
The structure in green was going to be 900 square feet smaller. And that's how it was reviewed by you and that's how it was reviewed by the public. That's what was noticed.
So it isn't, it is over. It's permitted. Main structure is over the permitted size of the CDP.
Oh, yeah. That structure in that location was supposed to be smaller. It was supposed to be 900 square feet smaller. But the overall square footage for the site under the current proposal would be less.
But if they change the footprint, then it's, then it's not substantial conformance. I understand. Okay. So they could go for a CDPA?
If, if the extension were granted, then they could amend the CDP.
And could that be done expeditiously or is that one of these year or two deals?
It probably wouldn't be, it would probably be straightforward in terms of processing. It's just a matter of time or staff resources.
Now, can we give an extension with a requirement that they apply within a certain amount of time? Or is that not possible?
I don't believe that it's possible to condition an extension. It's just a, an approval or denial. You could tell the applicant what your expectation is.
Yeah, you can't, you can't open up the.
It's, it's my opinion only, but my expectation would be a year from now. He'd have trouble saying he wasn't doing anything. But that's okay. Let's hear, they have the hearing.
Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, I just want to, well, I want to make a point, not really a question. These people have a permit. It's an existing permit. It has nothing to do with what they may or may want to do with the other, with the other project. If they come in with something and it decides, you know, oh, this isn't going to work, they can go back and build this house. If they have a permit to build. The only issue before us is their due cause for the extension.
Well said. Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And we have three, three speakers, Tara Moore, followed by Dan Marriott and then Josh Brolin. Tara?
Good evening. Thank you for seeing us before Christmas. Appreciate that. So we, I started on this project in March. Josh and his wife Catherine were here last year. They do have a financial hardship. It was, it's a over 7,000 TDSF that, that the CDP is approved for. And they first had redesigned to a 4,200 square foot house. I was brought on because I do really small structures. And as we got into it and the tenants left in January, they were looking at the house and decided that they really do like just the small house. And they needed some accessory, or accessory uses in their program so that they could live on the site. So they've moved in. And we were sent to planning and planning chose not to review for our permit. You know, I called numerous times. I visited numerous times to try to get a planner to review the amount of the reduction that we were doing because I felt it was pretty radical. Wanted to make sure we were within whatever parameters we could be within. I spoke to Stephanie Hunter and she just said footprint and building envelope. So we've been getting structural lined up, civil lined up, septic. Everything is ready to go. So we would like to remain under this CDP. We have four neighbor letters, which I set in front of you. Two of them are the adjacent northwesterly neighbors, all in approval for Josh and Catherine to be able to build a smaller structure and continue. So the substantial conformance application was submitted in September. This is the first review I've had. I would love to be able to go ahead with that. So I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Dan Marriott? Josh Brolin?
Hi guys, nice to see you again. I'm sorry that I'm seeing you again. I'm also sorry that I dressed down because for some reason I remembered you guys in Hawaiian shirts. I don't know, it was something that I created. Yeah, it was, I think it was you. We have been working from the beginning, since we saw you last. I inherited this CDP. So I think in a normal situation, had I had the money to build and if I was living down here at the time, we would have started it then. But I was renting it out. I didn't have the money to build. I didn't have the money to move down here. So now, since I last saw you, we've started the process. The only major difference is we've decided, coming from 1,400 square feet in Venice, that once we got down to the house, you know, 2,300 square feet feels like a mansion. So we don't need a bigger house. We don't want a bigger house. So all we did was shrink what the house that Jacob Dillon had designed through Ramirez. Just shrink it way down. There's a lot of property left. It's just one of those things like how can we utilize this property in a responsible way? I think it fits within the community. I think my neighbors are very happy that we're doing something much, much smaller and more responsible to the community. It's all eco-friendly. It's all solar. So I guess all I have to say is that we have been doing the work. We haven't stopped. We won't see you next year. I promise. We'll have this done within the year for sure, if not much sooner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else would like to address us on this item? Okay, see no one. Going to close the hearing?
What's, can I ask the architect a question? Staff here has said that this isn't substantial conformance review. So I don't know if that's the first time you've heard that or not, but so you're, you're ready, willing and able to file a ACDP or, or whatever they ask you? I mean, how far along are you on that process?
We have engineers idling right now. We, we paid the structural and the grading and, you know, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion, motion? Anybody? Complete silence? Everyone looks totally confused on this item or are not?
Well, we, we haven't really talked about the reasons for extension, right? I mean, and that is the topic of the day. So, you know, it's a shift in architect with anything and financial, that came up. But I mean, what are the reasons for extension would, are those meeting the, you know, section five criteria? I guess that is what we have to answer, right?
I guess the reason, I guess the reason stated in the letter is they want to make it smaller. Now, that has nothing to do with this application.
Right.
So, let's see. So is that under the, Trevor is that under, can we consider anything on a future promised application as far as extending this one? I guess it's the same as Norm's question.
And the standard here is due cause and you've seen the policy laid out there, you know, about the guidance for what due cause would consist here in terms of, you know, what you want to consider in the future? I mean, that seems a little different from evaluating the reasons why they need the extension.
Yeah, this is a tricky item. When you have staff saying they're going to need something entirely different anyhow and they want to try and finish under this, I don't know how we, and they're working, but yet they seem to disagreement on, on how to process an ongoing project. It's a little, little unusual.
Bonnie, if, if we denied this and they walked in tomorrow with a big roll of plans and engineering stuff, would us denying this change that?
Yes, because, I mean, if the, if the engineering plans and everything are for the new accessory structure, there would not be a planning entitlement in place for any structure in that location on the site. They, their planning entitlement is for the downsizing of the existing residence and for construction of a new house in the other location on the site with the, you remember what Richard showed on the right-hand side with the multicolors. So if the extension were denied, there would be nothing to find substantial conformance with. If, and, and as I mentioned before, I believe this is a different project. They would be able to complete the remodel or if they've, maybe they've already completed the remodel of the existing house. So that, that doesn't rely on this CDP. There would need to be, if you were to extend or grant an extension, that would allow them time to apply for an amendment. If we don't reach some sort of understanding about the substantial conformance of what they're, they're currently proposing. But they, if the permit stays alive through an extension, then they have the ability to either, to apply for an amendment.
And but that amendment would have to consider the, the new building area. It wouldn't be a substantial conformance. It'd just be an amendment.
Yeah.
No substantial conformance. Bonnie can say, yeah, go ahead.
Right.
We have to hear the amendment.
Right, you would hear the amendment.
So by us denying this, they would be forced to do a CDP?
In order to pursue the project, they would, it's, I mean, we'd have to look more closely at whether this accessory structure could be, if it meets any of the CDP exemptions. Richard's guess was that it doesn't, but we would obviously look closely at that and see if it could be processed administratively or if it would need to be a CDP.
And if they got rid of the 900 square feet and made it same footprint, it's still got a problem with what, what the use is on the accessory structure?
That, that would be less of a problem, I think, in my mind.
Okay, and you say the total square footage is less. So can I ask the architect question? You're taking this down a couple thousand square feet. Is that about right?
Yeah, there's on the site plan that you have there, but at the end of the letters, there's a couple of.
Well, just roughly, you know, I mean.
Roughly 3,000 square feet, all of it second story.
All of it second story?
Most of it second story, like two-thirds of it second story. Yeah.
So do we have a two-thirds rule question? Oh, you took it off, okay. Okay, so the 900 square feet that causes you not to have a, the ability to ask for a substantial conformance, is it necessary to have that 900 square feet outside of the footprint?
Well, this is the first I heard of it. It's in the original house, the original main structure, which is what they're living in. So, yeah. I called multiple times, but they don't assign a planner to these old CDPs, which is kind of counterintuitive and not very helpful. So we walked in month after month after month to try to get a reading from the planner of the day. And it was never mentioned to us that that would be an issue.
If they're ready to go with an application for CDP or ACDP, would it take a year? They filed down for a smaller house, blah, blah, blah?
I, I don't know what, what the amount of time would take. I mean, we can make every effort to expedite it, but I don't know.
So that's Gordian knot. Somebody make a motion. I don't know what to do.
Which, I don't know if this is a good question or a bad question. Which approach would require less staff time to get it done?
I would probably, granting the extension leaves the most options.
Time of staff to process this stuff. That's, you know, I'm looking at all the other stuff. I got backed up.
Right.
Right? So I'm trying to figure out, I remember when we sat through, there's a racist meeting. One of the concerns that staff had is they keep churning through these things. They keep sucking up a lot of time and you get, so I'm just trying to figure out, let's reduce. If we're going to reduce the amount of staff time, what would be the, the approach you would recommend they use?
Would you be careful here that, you know, to keep the discussion to whether there's due cause for the extension here and not get too far down the road into hypothetical other ways they could deal with whether the extension's granted or not?
Okay, well, then I have a question on that. If we give them a year extension, how certain would it be that they could start building within that year? Because I certainly don't want to give the ninth extension, even though I can't make that decision for another year.
I, I think it's, it's possible. I just don't, I don't have an exact answer for you.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm going to move that we grant the extension. Even though, notwithstanding the fact that there's nothing in this case that meets the criteria in LCP policy five. But I don't consider that policy, LCP policy number five is anything more than an expression of, of staff's intention on how to treat applications that come in. It's not binding on me. It's not binding on the rest of you. But it's interesting. I feel that there's, there's due cause here. I felt that there was due cause in the case of Norm's application. Seeing all the rolls of plans that are sitting down there, there's nothing in this case that meets anywhere near the effort that he's put into his. But nonetheless, I'm going to support it because I'm liberal when it comes to granting extensions. So I will move the, the approval for a one-year extension.
And I'm going to second it for the same reason that I seconded on Norm's is I see people trying to make forward progress. Yes, they've made some decisions and changes. They've downsized. The neighbors support it. There's no neighborhood character issue at all. It's responsible and to me, that's due cause enough for me. I think it's, so there's a motion on the table. And unless there's any more discussion, we'll have roll call. Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Jennings? Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On to 3B5. Administrative Coastal Development Permit Number 14-082 and application for construction of a new single-family residence and associated development at 30385 Morningview Drive. Not within the appealable coastal zone, by the way. I pulled this one. I just want to state, it was for a very minor question. So I don't know if anyone else has more major questions. Did, would anyone else have pulled this?
I would have.
Okay, so why don't you give us a little report and we'll start there. Thanks.
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the Planning Commission. Again, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I can provide a project description and provide some, some background. The application before you is for an 8,473 square foot one-story residence. No other discretionary requests such as site plan review or minor modifications or variances are requested as part of this application. A 891 square foot detached garage and an accessory structure comprising a 466 square foot guest house and a 466 square foot pool house are also proposed along with swimming pools, spas and water features. There was an ACDP that was approved in 2009 for a single-family residence, also 18 feet in height. That CDP did, was extended two times and was eventually withdrawn with the submittal of the subject application. The original submittals did, did propose extensive amounts of grading and through several iterations of redesign, the, the proposal before you is, is what staff can recommend for approval, the. recommend for approval, the non-exempt grading is below the 1,000 cubic yards of grading and the TDSF does meet the maximum, or does, the, does conform with the maximum TDSF requirements as well. There, there is one neighbor to the north who did express concerns regarding his loss of blue water views, we did speak on the phone on several occasions and eventually he decided to drop any opposition to the project. And that concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much, disclosures?
I visited the property with Chair Pearson and met with the applicant's team, got a perspective of the property, the properties around it, and got a good idea what they're trying to do.
I talked to Chris Loo today, I learned nothing.
Uh, no, no disclosures.
As Mr. Uring said, we visited the property and met with, with Chris and the architect, and I think, yeah, learned, learned, learned actually a bit about the property and how it lays and, and where you might build, and it's really much easier to see if you're actually there, so it was very worth going, going to see. Questions of staff?
Chair Pearson, anything beyond the staff report that you learned that would affect your decision here tonight?
Yeah, I think seeing the layout and understanding the, where the neighbors were, it, it's a really unique piece of land, it's sort of its own little peninsula out to a mind-blowing view for where it's located, and you got a great ability to see the impact on the neighbors, even though it's at 18 feet, and understand what was going on there and which, which was helpful. It made sense, so it was probably, it was a positive to go there and see that their plan made sense, and that's, to me.
It was to see the, what it physically would look like there rather than anything that was missing from the staff report?
Right, I was concerned initially with the neighbor behind, and I got to check out that in detail, and the other issue with the neighbor behind, here's a disclosure, all their windows that face that way are either frosted or apparently have the shades down, and they're not really big windows at all, their primary view goes in entirely different direction, so, but at 18 feet, that doesn't really matter, but it still interested me and I wanted to see that. So, yeah, okay.
I might as well bring this up front. I'm going to listen to what everybody says, but the, the finding we have to make, finding one requires us to say this is consistent with the local coastal plan and the Malibu municipal code, and I have problems with section 1702020, C2, E, F, and K, which have to do with, I can read them all, but they're in the record, and then, and section 1702030, which adopts the, the Malibu vision and mission statement.
So is that a question or more of a disclosure?
Well, I, I want to know how staff can, can make that, recommend that we make that finding when this house is exactly at its maximum size and it's a giant house.
Could, could I ask a question first, this, the only issue before us, now this is a receive and file matter, the only question is whether there's going to be a motion to bring this matter back for a full CDP, so that's really the issue before us, doesn't have anything to do with making findings.
Okay, well, then I will make a motion and bring it back as a CDP.
Well, let's see, we haven't had a hearing or...
Commissioner Mazza, I wanted to clarify that you haven't made a decision on this item yet, that you're going to wait till after all the evidence is presented before. You had a question about...
I was, a question of how, what the staff...
About the interpretation of the application of that section, correct?
Right. And I just want to bring it up front, we can discuss it after the, after the speakers.
Chair, can I make a question, ask, what, what are we doing here now? I mean, if it's a receive and file, and I, this is a procedural thing, I'm just trying to understand, receive and file says we get it, we read it, if we don't like it, we say bring it back, there's no hearing that takes place, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I did have a question of staff?
Please.
Just quick, I, it caught my eye, is this the first time we've ever used a fractional square foot for a TDSF? We have .24 feet as the allowed, so we got in...
We would usually just round that off.
Right, but we couldn't, because then they'd be exact and it wouldn't match, and then it wouldn't conform, it, it just caught my eye that we had actually a fractional square foot on this application, I'd never seen that before. So allowed .24, so they got, .24 under.
Okay. So, do we...
Hang, hang on, hang on, we got to still have a hearing here, okay?
I didn't think we did.
Yeah, okay.
We're not having a hearing on the, we're having, we're having public comment...
Public comment, excuse me.
On whether the commission is interested in pulling this to be a full CDP or not.
Correct. I do have one quick question, my question was, I noticed this property, which is quite large, there's, I didn't find any mention of animal, wildlife permeable fencing, and I couldn't tell, the applicant didn't know whose fencing was whose, but it looked like the entire property was fenced, isn't wildlife permeable fencing required?
It is.
Or am I wrong?
It is required in an ESHA, since this property is in the middle of a neighborhood and not located near ESHA, we did not require wildlife permeable fencing.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to open the public hearing then? For the public comment? It's an open hearing to hear public comment, and... And, hey, we have a speaker in astonishment.
How about that, Chair Pearson, before you get started, we have the applicants here, the architects, financiers, I, I thought I would spare you, and as opposed to having everybody fill out a speaker slip for three minutes, if you could give me something similar to what you gave Mr. Haney five minutes, I, I will keep my comments specifically in regards to whether or not this is something that should be brought back.
Could identify themselves that they're giving your time over, we can need to...
You have, Karen?
We have volunteers.
Robert, who's our architect, Evan Contino, and of course, the, the applicants are here, Greg and Micah.
All right, and you'll have two of them fill out speaker slips and you'll take their one minute each?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay, you have five minutes and you're free to go.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, some of those hands shot up vigorously, and I'd ask that you keep an open mind in regards to some of the things that I want to talk to you about tonight, there's a reason why this is in front of you as an administrative coastal development permit, because it concisely and completely complies with every single aspect of your zoning code. Let me show you a couple of things, first of all, the subject property, it's the largest property in the entire neighborhood, it's surrounded on all four sides, plus, if you include the driveway, with existing residential development, there's absolutely no environmentally sensitive habitat area on or around the property whatsoever, it's been historically significantly disturbed, it was a riding arena, and the fencing, Chair Pearson, the chain-link fencing was there when we bought it, and the survey shows that it weaves in and out of our property line, and we believe that it was all the neighbors historically that, that had constructed that fencing. So, I'm just going to move quickly past this part, I'm going to point out that the slope of the property for the two of you was there, it's flat as a pancake, it's mostly five-to-one or flatter, that's like almost imperceptible in regards to any sort of slope, it is a highly disturbed, very, very flat piece of property that, and this is the most important part perhaps, that you can't see from anywhere, you can't see it from a designated scenic highway, you can't see it from a trail, you can't see it from the street, designated scenic highway or otherwise, the only people that will see it will be the immediate neighbors, and yes, we met three times with the next-door neighbor and we assuaged his concerns, he has no objections, that's Mr. Ball, who's located to the north. There was a project that was approved for a 10,238-square-foot home back in 2009, this is what is being proposed now, it's beautiful, it's beautiful, it's an 18-foot-tall one-story structure that you can't see from anywhere. Now, look, I've listened with fascination to some of the comments for the two matters which preceded, what's going to be most efficient for staff, what's going to be most efficient for the city, we have a cannabis ordinance that we're trying to get done, we have, we have a dark skies ordinance which we're trying to get done, we're supposed to be updating Title 17. There's no site plan review on this, commissioners, you have the power, there's no question about it, you have the power, you could make the decision tonight and say, bring this back as a full coastal development permit, and I'll come in and, and you know me, I'll have a very concise and complete 15-minute presentation, staff will be making their recommendations, and the project by the numbers will be found consistent with every aspect of the local coastal program. And yes, I'm not naive, I know that there's a lot of discussion going on right now, I sat here and I testified when all five of you were on one side and all five of the council members were on the other, and the council gave direction to staff on a site plan review project to come back with criteria that were not subjective, but there's no site plan review on this. Now, it is a beautifully designed home, it is something that has been approved by the city biologist, by the city health department, by the fire department, it's within the confines of every single aspect of the code. A couple of you might prefer that we were doing a smaller house, but I'd ask you why? And at the end of the day, is it really something that this city's going to make a decision to do when it is demonstrably consistent with the law as written and applied in the city of Malibu? But I'll ask you the fair question, why? If it doesn't offend the neighbors, if it's not requiring an ordained amount of grading, if it's not hurting any environmentally sensitive habitat area or any public resource whatsoever, if you cannot see it, why would you care about the size of this house if it complies with the law? Commissioner Mazza has pointed out in previous deliberations, the, the bellwether project that, that created concern in this community as it pertained to mansionization, it's located not terribly far from this property, it's a 20,000-square-foot, two, three-story structure with the giant lions, and which you can see out from the public street. I would ask you, commissioners, to compare it to this, seven reviews, three years, hundreds of thousands of dollars, $400,000 already spent to underground the utilities and they're prepared to move forward, this would be a waste of your time and resources and that of the applicant as well, I'd urge you to go ahead and support the approval of the administrative coastal development permit, thank you.
Thank you, Don, is there anyone else that would like to address the commission on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close this, back here for a motion?
Discussion?
Sure.
The reason why I have, I want to bring this back is, number one, I, I, I don't think there's enough data here for us to know exactly what's going on, I, I read it like three times, only today did I find, find where it shows the lot square footage on one little section of the maps. But, I have to make finding one, and finding one says that we have to say that this, we have to relate development to the, to the recommended provisions of the general plan currently being prepared by the city, and this was done before it was prepared, it was prepared, to protect them, the, maintain the existing overall low-density nature of the community and preserve the integrity of the residential neighbors. Three, we also have to find excessive concentration of people, but we also have to follow the mission and vision statement, these are requirements for us to vote. And unfortunately, I looked at the table on 3 of 21, and the average house in the neighborhood, according to that data, is somewhere around 2,000 square feet, maybe 2,100. This is over 10,000, it's over five times the size. So I can't make that, that decision without future deliberation in figuring out how we could approve a house five times the size of the other houses.
Commissioner Mazza, you're referencing finding one of the general coastal development permit findings?
I'm questioning page six of 21.
Okay.
It's page six of 21, A1.
Okay, and so that finding is, states, the project as described in the application and accompanying materials and is modified by any condition of approval conforms with the certified City of Malibu Local Coastal Program.
Correct. And the city, and the Malibu Coastal, Local Coastal Program incorporates the Malibu municipal code, it states specifically, you must follow the Malibu municipal code.
What, can you tell me?
Part of the LCP.
The, there's a, well, the, this project meets all of the LCP development standards, and so that's, that's what we based this finding on.
Except the requirement to meet Malibu's coastal standards, which if more restrictive, are take precedent.
Well, I, I think the difference is between policies and development standards, and we've had this discussion before, the general plan sets forth policies and the, the municipal code sets forth the development standards to implement those policies, and so the staff's position is that when something conforms with all the development standards, it is therefore in conformance with the general plan, and I know there's some, that you disagree with that, but that's, you asked how staff could make that finding, and so this is how staff can make that finding, that it complies with all of the development standards as set forth in the LCP and the municipal code, and that's how finding one can be made.
Yeah, and I'm just relying on section 17 of municipal code, and the fact that the LCP incorporates that, and I'm also relying on, on 1702030, the fact that the municipal code specifically incorporates the, the local coastal, I mean, the Malibu general plan.
Okay, yeah. And the, the part of the municipal code that you're talking about is the, the vision, vision and mission statement, and what I would say is staff's position again is that the development standards that are part of the municipal code are what implement the vision and mission statement.
But what I'm saying is, and we can go back and forth to this last time, I'll say it, the city council at some point has adopted the municipal code, and as part of that adoption of the municipal code, they incorporated in section 17, the development standards, these provisions, they put them in there, nobody else put them in there, and we're asked to certify that we're following their municipal code.
Right.
And they're in there, if they, if they want to change them, they can take them out.
Right, we have a difference of opinion about policy and standard, that's...
Yeah, and I'm not sure how we're getting the municipal code, since this is a coastal development permit and we're, it's looking for compliance with the local coastal program, so...
Well, the local coastal program incorporates the Malibu municipal code.
I'm not sure which section you're referring to in the LIP.
I mean, to me on this one, this is an example, if you don't like our current rules, we need to change the rules, this, this house, it, it's huge, it's big, but as far as I could tell, it fits all the rules we're supposed to use that implement, you know, that are supposed to codify our mission statement, whether I like them or not.
But how does it incorporate section 0203C?
Because people, people sat down when we formed the city and formed the codes to, to give structure to the vision and mission statement.
And this is...
Whether I like it or not, once again, I, I think if we don't like the codes, we need to change them, but this is, that's not what we're doing.
What I'm saying is, they adopted it, they adopted 17020, C2, E, F, and K, they adopted those, they're in there.
Just to be clear, we, we aren't debating this 0203 or whatever, 020, it's do we want to have a broader discussion, the fact we're discussing this hard on it says, we probably do.
And, and Chair?
Yes.
Can, you know, when we had our joint meeting with the city council, Bonnie provided us with the definition of mansionization that was run by three cities, and this project seems to be a textbook example of mansionization, 10,000-square-foot-plus house surrounded by 2,300-square-foot houses. Now, the question is, does a, a component of the general plan give us a reason to bring it back and take a look at it? And give us a reason potentially to deny the size of this house? And I'll tell you what, you got an example of that in tonight's, if you go to item 4A, okay, page three, just saying, the general plan has some, some standing in this thing, because then that, and this is for the, the beach project, but at the top of the page says, staff is recommending denial of the CDP for the following base, basis, and then two-thirds of the way down the page, it says, use of the hotel restaurant by the general public is contrary... is contrary to general plan use policy 4.4.3." So they're using the general plan to deny CDP. If they can do it, I can do it. All right? Or at least we should talk about it. Right? I mean, the problem is, we're going to get more of these. This is what Malibu is becoming. Now, maybe when we sit down and talk about it, we say, "There's nothing we can do, you let it go." Maybe there's something, when we have a discussion, we say, "There's some suggestion we should provide to the city council to change something," to give us, but we, we don't discuss it, we're never going to get there. So I'm recommending we bring it back, have that discussion, maybe it'll go down in flames, that I think is worth having.
Was that a motion?
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, that's my motion. Bring it back so we can review it.
Bring it back as a full CDP?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, this is, this, I guess, is the first shot of the revolution that was promised. First, you used neighborhood character to try to get into the issue of structure size. Now you've taken a clean sheet project, which has absolutely meets every standard, clearly and admittedly meets every standard. And we're going to try to bring that back so we can impose some subjective standard on what's too big and what's not too big. This is a much bigger deal than simply the question of neighborhood character. At least in the neighborhood character, you had an argument you could make. This one, there's just no argument at all. Keep in mind that the people who wrote the general plan and the people who wrote the vision and mission statement are the same people who wrote the standards that they put into the development standards. That's what they meant when they put those development standards in. If you want to change the rules, go back and change the rules. Do it, let's do it honestly. Go back to the city council and say, "Look, we think houses are too big, we're going to lower the standards." But this sneaky way to do it is just disgusting.
But it's not sneaky. We're just saying we want to talk about this particular project in more specifics. It's not, you know, it's nothing more than that.
I just have the same statement. I have no love of huge homes, as everyone knows. I just think it fits the rules that we have and as I see them. So can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess before we get out of the consent calendar. All right, we're going to resume the meeting now and we're on to item 4A. Coastal development permit number 17-092, variance number 15-037 and 17-041, conditional use permit number 17-012, conditional use permit amendment number 15-004, joint use parking agreement number 17-001, and lot tie number 17-001, an application to permit the continued operation of existing legal non-conforming hotel use, construct accessory hotel facilities, remove guest-only condition for existing restaurant, and expand the use, relocate required onsite parking off-site to and tie the lot with 22853 Pacific Coast Highway as continued from December 4th at the property located at 22878 Pacific Coast Highway. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Pearson. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The project site is the Malibu Beach Inn Hotel located at 22878 Pacific Coast Highway. The 47-room hotel was approved in 1987 by Los Angeles County and the California Coastal Commission with 52 onsite parking spaces. In 2006, the city approved a new onsite hotel restaurant use accessed from within the hotel. The restaurant was conditioned to be open to their hotel guests and their MBTS only. The applicant is proposing to develop a swimming pool and pool deck on the west side of the hotel in an area currently used for required hotel parking. The construction of the pool and deck will displace 30 parking spaces that are proposed to be relocated off-site to 22853 Pacific Coast Highway, which is the Hertz site. The applicant is also proposing to allow the hotel restaurant to be open to the general public and increase the dining area. The requested proposal requires multiple discretionary requests. The first aspect of the project's scope is a hotel conditional use permit and a consolidation with the restaurant conditional use permit that was previously approved in 2006. Due to amortization under the Malibu Municipal Code, the project includes a conditional use permit to continue the hotel use. The hotel conditional use permit incorporates the conditional use permit for the restaurant as previously approved to maintain one consolidated permit to monitor permit compliance. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit to permit the continued operation of the existing legal non-conforming hotel because the zoning and land use element of the general plan allow hotel use as a conditionally permitted use and the hotel use on the subject height site has been in operation for over The new project's scope is as follows. New construction is proposed at the hotel site as described in the slide. In summary, the new scope includes the pool and pool deck for the hotel guests only, conversion of existing space to bathroom and pool equipment to serve the pool, the displacement of the 30 required parking spaces, and reconfiguration of the existing septic system to accommodate the pool construction. The parking lot will also, is also proposed to be reconfigured to accommodate the potential future crosswalk across Pacific Coast Highway. Also, as part of this project, staff is looking at the restoration of the 56, approximately 56-foot-wide view corridor that runs parallel to the western property line over the proposed pool and pool deck. This was a condition of the original coastal development permit for the hotel issued by the California Coastal Commission. The restaurant CUP amendment is related to conditions that were imposed on the permit at the time it was approved. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the restaurant conditional use permit to remove the hotel guest-only condition and to expand the service area consistent with the existing operation. Sometime after approval of the restaurant, the restaurant was made available to the general public and the seating area was expanded. The applicant would also like to add food and beverage service for hotel guests only at the proposed pool deck area. The slide illustrates in gray the approved indoor and outdoor dining area, which consists of approximately 563 square feet with 42 seats. The area highlighted in green illustrates the expanded seating area. So the total, including the highlighted area and the gray area, is approximately 1,377 square feet with 78 seats. This aspect of the project involves the variance number 17-037 to allow less than the required number of parking spaces for the hotel restaurant use. As illustrated in the parking analysis and the staff report, this request intensifies an existing non-conforming parking condition because it was approved with 58 onsite parking spaces when 112 parking spaces are required under current code. The proposed project does not provide sufficient code-required parking for the proposed new uses. The proposed improvements to the hotel, including the expansion of the restaurant and the pool deck with food and beverage service and associated employees, require 22 additional parking spaces, while only eight additional off-site parking spaces are proposed for the new uses. Thirty-eight totals, 38 parking spaces are proposed at the Hertz site. Thirty of those are for the displaced parking spaces, eight are new spaces. The proposed project also includes a lot tie and joint use parking agreement for the off-site parking. This aspect of the project involves variance number 12-041 to allow the proposed off-site parking to be more than 300 feet as measured along a safe pedestrian To address the pedestrian accessibility issue, the applicant is proposing a valet shuttle system that will allow the valet parking attendants to shuttle the parking spaces from the hotel site to the Hertz site in a vehicle. The path of travel is illustrated in the slide with the green and red dash lines. The applicant has been working with Caltrans and the city public works department on installing a crosswalk across PCH in front of the hotel. If the crosswalk were installed, the variance would no longer be required and the Hertz site would meet the code requirements to serve as an off-site parking lot. Staff is recommending denial of the coastal development permit, the conditional use permit amendment, and the discretionary request on the following basis. First, the request intensifies an existing non-conforming parking condition. Second, the proposed project does not provide sufficient code-required parking for the proposed new uses. Third, the use of a hotel restaurant by the general public is contrary to the general plan land use policy 4.4.3, which provides the city shall regulate size and design of hotel development by limiting restaurants on the same site to a capacity necessary to serve guests of the hotel only. Additionally, the environmental health administrator determined that the impacts to the existing onsite wastewater treatment system may be potentially significant and that conformance with the Malibu plumbing code and the local coastal program could not be determined based upon the onsite wastewater treatment system report provided by the applicant. And lastly, the public works department determined that the parking and traffic impacts may be potentially significant and conformance with the local coastal program could not be determined based upon the report provided by the applicant. I will now be turning the presentation over to the public works department and Craig George from the environmental sustainability department on behalf of environmental health to discuss their review and findings concerning the project.
Thank you.
Here, here.
What are you doing, Joey?
I saw that.
Good evening, finding commissioners. I'm just going to give you a real brief kind of a summary on the environmental health aspect of this and what my findings in meeting with Mel Talent, the environmental health administrator today. First and probably foremost of why we're not approving this, they have an expired operating permit, it expired back in October. So part of this is informing them, they need to follow through and renew that operating permit for the existing system. There also is some discrepancies, I think was mentioned to you, between the amount of seating and the actual reports submitted by their wastewater consultant. I think that can be rectified, but at the current time, there is discrepancies between that and those inconsistencies would lead to not approving that. The project is also located in the prohibition zone for the civic center wastewater prohibition, and that prohibition says there shall not be any increases in capacity or flows, and I would think that the flows would be increased by the increased seating in the restaurant. That is something that's state law and that would be a determination made by the reg- That is something that's state law and that would be a determination made by the regional water quality control board, so we would also request that they address that with them and get approval for what they're proposing to do. And with that, that's all I have to offer, but I'm here to answer questions.
So, good evening Commissioners. Public Works reviewed this plan back in September. It did have the alternative parking spots over there in the Hertz lot. We looked at what their proposed plan was and the number of parking spots and everything looked good from that standpoint. They had the number of parking spots, I think it was fifty-eight, they needed to get and based on that original plan that we saw, they met that requirement. There's another requirement that we issued for this project was to install a crosswalk on PCH to allow safe pedestrian crossing, especially when they're doing valet. We didn't want the valets to run across PCH and have another accident, so we felt that to mitigate that issue is to have the applicants install a crosswalk. We did meet with the applicant and Caltrans to work out the details on the layout and design of that crosswalk and Caltrans was satisfied with the initial layout and concept of that crosswalk. And just recently, we've noticed that, or we were informed that the plans have been revised and to increase the parking requirement, we looked at that plan again and that plan does not meet the additional parking spots that were required based on the proposed changes. They did recently submit in a parking study that our traffic consultants will be looking at, looking at it very closely. Also, the revised plan that we looked at didn't have the crosswalk shown on the plan which was something that was very concerning and really we want that in because that's a safety issue, we really want that rectified. Last thing that we looked at is, as I think everyone's aware of, all the FEMA regulations that are being modified. At this location, they're planning to do some interior remodel and doing some additions to the building, so that requires us to look at what type of improvements that they're doing, what's the cost of those improvements, and we look at what that costs are compared to the appraisal value. We requested this information and we got some, we got a cost estimate, but it wasn't detailed enough to where we could make a determination that if it was good. We also have not received an appraisal of the property, so to make that evaluation, what type of FEMA regulations that they'll be have to adhere to. So, those are the few things that we looked at and felt that since these issues haven't been addressed based on these new revised plans, we couldn't approve these plans at this time.
Chair? Chair? Can I ask a question? One way.
Absolutely.
Sure. Yeah. Two questions. Has your traffic consultant looked at the traffic study they gave you?
Yeah, we just got it, I think, a couple of weeks ago and so he's looking at it right now.
You haven't got an opinion back from him yet?
Not yet.
Okay, and the September approval you granted, because you signed off, there was a September approval, you guys said it's okay if they build a crosswalk, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you said subsequent to that, something changed which made you to retract that approval. What specifically was it that changed it?
Well, that plan that we looked at in September, it got changed a lot. The amount of improvements that they were doing on their properties, the interior remodel, the parking requirements that are associated that, our planning department came to us and said, "The parking requirements have now gone up." And so, we looked at the plan and saw that the parking requirements now, based on this, the current plan didn't meet those requirements and so thus we couldn't approve it.
One quick question.
Yeah.
And I'm sure we'll have a million later. When I looked at the parking spaces and the lifts, they didn't seem to match up with a required parking size for a regular parking lot.
Isn't that 4B?
That's, well, it's part of his study, I mean, he's talking about it. Is that, am I incorrect?
For the new plan or the one?
Yeah, well, the one with the parking lifts.
That is part of the Hertz item in 4B, so we'll talk about that.
I know, it's confusing, yeah, I got you, they're kind of.
And then I have a question of staff, and that is, some of the things on 4A, if we approve them, they're moot if we don't approve 4B. So, what happens? We say, "Oh, it's great to have a sidewalk and a walkway, but you can't park over there." It just is not built or it has to come back or what?
Actually, I was gonna make a few comments. Rob, were you finished with your remarks?
Yeah, guys, let's stay close, there's a lot of questions, but I would like to maybe push us to here there and so we can incorporate our questions with what we hear from.
I just wanna ask Craig one real quick question. I mean, I.
I can't stop you, so go.
Okay, no, not you. On the RQ, the Regional Water Board restriction on new outflow, do we have an MOU that says we can't, we absolutely can't do that and so what do we do if they're asking for it?
Well, that's a determination that are gonna have to be made by the regional board. That's their law, that's their requirement, and so I would submit that they go, submit that information to the regional board and get a determination from them.
But my question is, we have an MOU saying we won't allow it unless you guys okay it.
Correct.
And we're sitting here getting ready to allow it or not allow it. So, do we have to wait until they okay it to be legal?
Well, I think it would be probably more beneficial to understand what it is that they're going to actually do or get approved so that that isn't a moving target that they go to the regional board with, so I think you need to confirm the number of seats and the number of things going on with the restaurant first.
Okay, stay close gentlemen. Disclosures, please. Jeff?
Yeah, yes, I met with Commissioner Pearson, with the applicant team over at the Malibu Inn. Learned a lot of things. I thought I did and the more information that comes out, the less I know. There were, what's the best way to do this? As we went through the 4A items pretty much point by point and some of the things, they just gave us more information. There was, you know, there was a question there about the size of the hedges that are surrounding the pool. Now, they sent me a consent agreement from the Coastal Commission and from 2016 which seems to indicate they don't have to have, they can leave the six-foot hedges up there without a problem. Don't know. I mean, and I'm surprised that wasn't in the staff report someplace. I got the, a report from Jaroslawski that seemed to indicate that the wastewater treatment system sands the pool area, that the current wastewater treatment system was adequate for what they needed, and that wasn't in the staff report. And I think Jaroslawski was the expert, Greg, you called upon the last time, this sort of says he knows what he's doing, so whether he got wet, sidetracked in this one, I don't know, but he seems to indicate that the wastewater treatment system will handle what they had. And then I got the public works department approval, it wasn't in the staff report, you guys had approved it and didn't get any information that they had been unapproved as a result of subsequent stuff. So, I guess my, and I think Bonnie's gonna address this because I spoke to her a little bit this afternoon, my conversation with the applicant seemed to indicate that everybody was surprised by the recommendations in the staff report, okay? That they thought they were having a different conversation or a better conversation with the staff. They were surprised that some of the items that were listed in there were listed. I was surprised to find that some of the reports that may have been relevant were not included in the staff report. Now, I talked to Bonnie and I think you were on the phone conversation, we did that, and Bonnie's suggestion was that she felt they had had a lot of back and forth with the applicant and there really no, you know, it was, a lot of things were changing as they were moving down the path and there really was no surprises on the table. Now, I wasn't in any of those meetings, so I don't know, okay? It was just the sort of the impression that came out of there and then, and I guess it's sort of, you know, a while back, we had that zone text amendment that your staff had recommended trying to get through with, and it seemed to me at that point in time, everybody was jumping up and down as fast as they could to try and get off-site parking approved so somebody could do that. Now, when I read this staff report, it seems that we've gone the other direction with that. Now, that may be the case, there may be a whole bunch of items in there, but it's sort of, I was sitting out there on the outside as an applicant trying to figure out what it is I'm supposed to be doing. I'm not sure if we're in favor of off-site parking, unfavorable off-site parking, or so it was just, what I learned was, there was a lot of confusion both on the part of the applicant, confusion on the part of us as I went through the review, confusion as to why some of the stuff that I thought should have been in the report wasn't in the report and all of that may be explained, all right? This was a very complex project and I recognize that and appreciate that, but that was just sort of my takeaway when I walked out of that room.
John, you done?
Yep.
Okay, I met with Chris Marks and Tony Kenzerini or whatever, I guess, yesterday and we had a very courteous meeting. I met with, I didn't, I learned anything that wasn't piled on me yesterday and today with the staff report. I also met with Tony and Norm the day before when we were supposed to have the hearing last time, I think it was December, I don't know, it was November something. Same deal, we got some information, but it's all in here. And then I met with one of the Manny brothers, which I always get the names confused about four months ago, and we discussed the project in general, but I had no, nothing to go on, so I learned what they were trying to do basically is explained in here and that's the extent of outside information. I learned nothing that isn't in this big pile of paper.
As Commissioner Mazza mentioned, we had visited the property with the applicant team. One thing that did come up in that visit, which I don't know if it's really kind of captured adequately in the docs here and maybe it's more directed to staff, is the question about the pool deck, and I don't know if we want to go in this after the public comment, but just one question that came up is, if there's a pool area for use of guests only, is that considered open space or do we need parking for that? And again, we could cover that as we get the public comment, but that was one thing that didn't seem to be adequately addressed here.
Something you learned that you don't know.
That's right. I learned the question to ask, yeah, yeah, thank you, and that's all.
My disclosure is basically the same as Mr. Uring's with some additions. We met on Friday at the location for over two hours and went through item one at a time to try and figure them out and I think those disclosures have all been made by Mr. Uring and I would second them for myself. Additionally, I have dined at that restaurant many times, maybe as many as twenty. In my memory, the seating has always been the way it is now. I've never known it to be different. If it was at some point, maybe when it first opened, I didn't quite get there then, long before the current owners. I have just, I just, some of this has sort of occurred to me as I've gone and all those times, I've never had a problem parking with a valet onsite. I told them when we met, I'd never seen it crowded, but that's not quite true. I actually have seen it where most of the seats were full, like for Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve or one of those, I can't remember. We've been there Christmas Eve, my family, three, four years and lovely time to be honest, I'll disclose that. Beautiful out on that deck with the moon, just amazing. What I realized, it has been crowded a couple of times, never had a problem parking, but it's so low density even crowded because it's spaced out, it's not crammed in. It's like that. Further disclosure, my brother-in-law was the general manager of the hotel before the current owners, which is probably part of the reason why I was there all the time, probably most of the time that was related, but not all the time. And then I realized something today and I just wanted to disclose it because it has no impact on me at all, but I realized probably when the current owners bought it, they fired my brother-in-law and I'm not sure if that's true, but I'm guessing it. It had no impact on me then because it had no impact on him, it was never something I had thought of and in reality, he has such a better job that's meant, where he's meant to be now anyhow, so there's zero emotion around his employment there for either side of this issue. It has no impact on me at all, zero. And I think that's my disclosure. Okay, shall we, I, this was to me such a complicated one, we got it Wednesday night, it's complicated, two-hour-plus meeting Friday and then basically straight into this Monday. I personally, as much, as much we get done is great, my thought is we'll probably continue these items and not finish them. I don't, I, that's a guess. If we do, great. I wouldn't count on it from the amount of questions I have alone. I know, so we need to, we need to dig in, but I guess one other disclosure I would add is I wish during this process on a project this big and this complicated, I told this to the applicant, I wish they had, like other people in town do, pulled us, planning commissioners in sooner to just to sort of chat about what they're doing so we don't just have this giant mothership land on us of huge issues. I've never seen a staff report that had so many reasons for denial and to go through them all and understand them, I feel on some of the items, I can't say yes or no them at all right now because I don't actually, haven't had enough time to really learn about them. So, this is, this is a big issue. Normally, I'm surprised, the community doesn't seem to be, want to be involved at this point, which is interesting. I thought maybe there'd be some community involvement and I guess I'm creating all sorts of thoughts for people. So, I want to open public hearing, but first, Jeff?
Just, I wanted to ask Bonnie a question. We don't ordinarily get a staff report or have a matter come before us where staff says, "Well, we haven't reviewed this or we haven't reviewed that or we haven't completed the review." We had one the other day where we just sort of put it off, remember, maybe two or three weeks ago where we sort of put it off to get a final review to get, but this seems like it's more substantial than that and so I'm just curious as to, why is this before us now and not after all the review has been completed?
This has been a very complex project to review. It, as you know, it all started, it came before you initially as a zoning text amendment and I am gonna answer your question, I just wanted to preface it with some other things. Zoning text amendment and then that didn't go over well with you or the, actually, I can't remember what your recommendation was, but the planning, the city council ultimately wasn't in favor of doing that and so the applicant came back and submitted application, I think their applications were already in for the, an APR for the pool, so they added to that a variance for the three-hundred-foot distance for the off-site parking lot. One of the challenges with this project has been that it has evolved in terms of what has been, what the goal is of getting, what they're trying to address with the application. It started with, you know, we're going to displace some parking, move it across the street and we need a variance for the three-hundred-foot distance. From the very beginning, the reason why the applicant went in the direction of a zoning text amendment was that staff didn't feel that there was a strong basis for supporting a variance for the three-hundred feet. So, this whole concept has always given the planning department some So, this whole concept has always given the, the planning department some pause, so then the project evolved from the pool and the parking area to also addressing the restriction on the restaurant that was part of the 2006 CUP, that it'd only be limited to guests of the hotel. And then that eventually changed, and they decided to try to capture the fact that the square footage apparently never matched in practice what was granted in the permit, which occurred before their time. And then that changed, and they added addition, they wanted to increase the parking capacity beyond just, just accounting for the, the places that are being displaced on the, from the pool, to also accommodating this additional parking for the restaurant. So now there are structures in the form of lifts being added to the Hertz site, so that, again, changed things. It's been a bit of a moving target, and we've had lots and lots of meetings with the applicants, and we've tried to be as straightforward as we could about the concerns that we've had about the applications. It's a case of, we fundamentally disagree about the way the code applies or doesn't apply to different aspects of this. And in terms of it being kind of incomplete in some ways, that's another thing I think we disagree on. You, you've got the information from their septic engineer, and they've, their, their parking study, they don't feel like there are any, that their application is lacking in any way, so we weren't going to get any further with that. So, here it is before you.
Okay. I think Steve had a question. Working down, oh, you don't anymore? You forgot now? It's gone?
Yeah.
Okay, John?
Well, you know, in looking at this, and talking to the applicant, and then the staff comes in, and we have things like the regional water board question, the traffic consultant not having been reviewed, a lot of what you said is incomplete, which is stuff we're supposed to rule on. And when I talked to the applicant on Sunday, they seemed like, oh, everything was a big surprise when they got the staff report Wednesday night, I guess Wednesday night or Thursday. Made a great Christmas. I'm wondering if, now that the, the staff report is out, the questions are on the table, I'm wondering if the applicant would like to continue this item, and sit down and answer some of these questions, because I want to listen to everybody, but if people are telling me they don't have the answers, how do we, how do we make a decision, other than saying no? So, you know, it's your ballpark, because we'll, we'll have a hearing, but I don't see how you're going to win, unless you really have some great points.
Yes, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Tony Kanzarini, is this not, not on? Let's see. What do I do?
There it is.
Is it on now?
Tony, before you start, just, just one, you know, the, the regional water quality issue, okay?
I've never heard that.
It's no, no, we're in the staff report.
I've never heard it before.
Yeah, so I'm just, you know, I mean, the issue that sort of says, what is the thing that everybody's supposed to be shooting at?
I, I have an idea, guys, before we start. I have an idea. I, I agree, and I told this to the applicant, I didn't see any way we would finish this, but maybe we can detail just quickly, yeah, right, what the questions are we have, and then continue this item. But I think we should take public hearings, so we have that at least to add to our mix. And that, that's kind of where I think we can go. I have so many questions, and, but I think we should open public hearing.
And I agree, and someplace, before we leave, I'd like to make sure that we have, like, a target list of everything, so that we know that, you know, regional water qual- if that's an issue, somehow-
We have a stenographer, we need a stenographer.
How do we do that, right?
We'll, we'll get to that, so.
Well, can I comment on that?
But, can I stop?
No, I agree with you, but I, but it's his hearing, and so what I want-
Well, we can continue it either way.
We can continue it either way. The question is-
But not yet.
Do you oppose the strategy he's using?
The, of course, it, Chair and members of the commission, it is your hearing, but you've kindly asked me whether or not we would prefer to continue it until all of this has worked out, and that I can answer. We, we don't want to continue it, not that we necessarily expect you're going to finish this tonight, but things like what we just heard, we, as you were suggesting, Commissioner Euring, we need to, to list these things out. I've never heard anything about the Water Regional Board having to approve this. What I do know is that a lot of confusion was created on Wednesday or Tuesday of last week, when the planning department sent out a request for comment to the various departments with a new project description. And the new project description, for the first time, gave them a different parking count based on two different things, which are fundamental to this whole discussion. One was something I had discussed with planning for some time, and that was their opinion that we are not grandfathered under the previous code that was used at the time of the 2006 Geffen CDP and CUP on this project, which required one space for every room, because it was entitled to that grandfathered one per room, just as we are. The new code has two per room, so that immediately added 47 parking spaces. That didn't, that did not involve-
We should, we should open the hearing for all this, this, this is all-
I thought we were open.
No, I apologize, and it was, we got into question, so hang tight, watch this.
Wait, 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 let me ask one question of Bonnie.
Oh, see, that's what causes this, though.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. I just, I, I know, just for context, I know there's been opinions thrown around as far as kind of how things have moved, there's been a lot of confusion. I just want to clarify, from your team's perspective, this applicant has continued to work with your team every step along the way, it's just been a moving target. There's no kind of a, you know, no, it's holding on the brakes, it's just, it's complicated. Is that all?
Right, I mean, I think there's been, I think the intention was to be, you know, everybody's intention is to, to work together cooperatively, it's just been a challenge because we would request or send an incomplete letter out on listing particular issues, and then the revisions would come back, but then something else would be different, and so that's part of what the challenge has been, you know, discovering that the, the seat count was different, or that, oh, now they're serving food and beverages at the pool, we never knew that until recently, and some things like that. And so it's, you know, some things probably seemed obvious to them that weren't obvious to us, and then in terms of keeping the rest of City Hall, in terms of the other department reviewers looped in, that has been a challenge too, because the emails and other information were coming in kind of daily, or a couple times a week, and so that's, you know, it's when you start putting together the entire staff report, that you realize that Public Works may not realize that, based on the email we got last week, that this is, this aspect of this project has changed, and so that's how some of that confusion happened.
All right, thank you, sorry.
Okay. So, here's the deal, I'm going to open the public hearing, but I, I noticed something. I think except, well, except for Dennis, I think every single other person here is part of the applicant team. Am I wrong? No, I'm not wrong. So, I think the advantage is, yes, do your 15 minutes, but we can have a discussion overall. Give, give us your 15 minutes, that'll give us more questions, and we're, we'll just engage in the conversation to try and make some progress on this. I don't, I don't know a better way to go right now. And so, yeah, you have 15 minutes, you can save time for rebuttal, I don't know that that's really necessary.
I'm going to invite Mr. Manny up, but before I do that, just to finish the thought, the two things that threw this off kilter were the issue about the two parking spaces per room, and, which is in the staff report, which we always assumed was not valid and would never happen, but then, on the environmental issue that I think affected Mr. George's department, that, and Bonnie, with all fairness, forever we have, and I think we've got the, the record of the fact that we've always said there would be snacks and, and drinks and food and beverage at the pool, but it's limited to guests only. It wasn't last week that we sent that email, but in any event, that-
Well, we're going to start, you're going to get a chance to say everything, I, I need to get the public hearing started. Can you start the clock, please, and you and your team are-
Okay. So anyway, I, I just wanted to say before Mr. Manny got up, that the environmental problem should go away, because what Jaroslawski said is, as long as you're not saying that there are 44 new dining or eating seats for the restaurant by the pool, we're okay. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that is correct.
Commissioner Simon Manny. My brother and I purchased Malibu Beach Inn February 2015. In the summer of 2015, we filled up an application to put a pool in with the city. They asked us to go ahead and apply for a ZTA, so we can cross the street. We bought the Hertz property to be able to do that, so we said fine. In November 2015, we, we started the application to do the ZTA, and we didn't know what a ZTA was, but this, Zone Text Amendment. We came up in front of you, we were denied, we went to the, to City Council, we were approved, then you, you guys asked back to review this whole thing, and so, when, when the planning commission wanted to review this, the ZTA, and the city was, was us 100% of the time, to build the pool, we're going to build the crosswalk, we did go to Caltrans, we did apply, we, we, matter of fact, we just put a bond with Caltrans to put the crosswalk. We're getting the crosswalk approved, we're going to get, we're getting it maybe next week. We have done everything to do whatever the city ever wanted. Now, where did we get wrong? When we went to the city, and we met with the assistant attorney and the city attorney telling them, "We're not going to do ZTA anymore, we're going to go for the variance," and they said, "No." They said, "Well, I'm sorry, the ZTA doesn't work." So when we started doing that, everything went the other way. That's fine, but we're not asking for anything. We are building a crosswalk, we are going to show you in the next couple of weeks that we do have a permit to build a crosswalk, we do have Hertz within 300 feet, it's not a variance, it is within 300 feet, okay? And it's been approved, okay? So, we're, everything we're doing is, is within our right, nothing is outside the box. Now, we go into the, to the restaurant, the restaurant always had 72 seats. I don't know who's been there, who's not been there, everybody's been open for the public. We realized that the city had an issue with it, so we said, "Okay, we have access parking across the street, let's make it legal, so people don't question it." We had issue also with the coastal commission when we bought the property. We worked it out with the coastal commission, we're not here to fight anybody, we just want a pool. That's all we want. It's always, it's only going to be for our guests, the same guests are in, so we're not adding people, and the only way you're going to get in there was a key, like any other hotel. You can't get into a pool if any other hotel, unless you have a key to get in. So we're not adding more people, we're not adding any more toilets, we're not adding any more anything else. And the only thing we're getting right now, because we said no to the ZTA, in my opinion, and we're going to go for a variance, now the city got us 307 pages to deny us. I rest my case.
Okay, well, that, that really does sum up the, the road we've been on. In fact, when the second reading was denied, you all probably know that the Council on First Reading approved the ZTA, and the ZTA was what the staff wanted, the city attorney and the planning department, so we went along with that. But at that hearing, what the city council said directly to us was, "Do something that cites specifics." So that's what this is. This is just applying to us, it's not trying to change your parking plan citywide in any way. The, back to that history a little bit, Bonnie, in fact, our original APR did have the variance in it. We thought we didn't need a variance for the 300 feet, because we, we viewed it as a storage lot, but when you said you thought it needed a variance, we applied for the variance. So everything was on file when we started this process, again, after the ZTA was denied. The thing that changed was, we did add the stacked parking on Hertz, and that was done to provide, to really respond to what the mayor and others said to us that night, provide more parking than is required. So that's why we're providing, I believe it's eight spaces more than the code according to us. And the code according to us, we believe we have an absolute legal right to, and that is, one parking space per room, which, by the way, is consistent with just about every city. We have not found a city that requires two. Agoura is at one, Santa Monica is at one, going down to actually a half in some areas. City of LA is one for the first 30, then it goes to, to a lesser amount, but they're all less than one, because no hotel uses two. We don't use two. Part of this application, and our traffic engineer is here, and maybe if, if you'd like, you could see that presentation, is that we determined based on actual observation in October of 2015, that we weren't using all the parking we had. And he then projected how much parking we would need with the potential for growth. He looked at, and he'll, he'll explain this to you, Caltrans data on the flow of traffic, and determined that even on the peak months, we still would have no trouble getting across the street to that parking. The, you'd probably like to hear about some of the specific issues in the letter, and, you know, we've got 15 minutes, so is that clock somewhere? I can see it right there. So I should get him up in, in a hurry, but in the letter that we wrote, we tried to tackle the, the major issues that were raised. I've already talked about the two-for-one versus one-for-one, because that gets rid of this idea that we need a variance for underparking, because we're not underparking. I know in the staff report presented by Stephanie, she said the variance was for the restaurant parking, it's not. The variance they asked us to apply to, which we did apply for, was based on the assumption that you needed two per room, because we have plenty of parking, a great surplus in terms of correcting the deficiency that the 2006 Geffen report had. It said that our restaurant was five or 600 square feet, when it's always been 1,377 square feet, so we are providing the full 14 parking spaces that are required. The, so that sort of deals with the parking issues, the poolside snack and drink is very similar to what I understand you considered for the surf rider in the deck that they provided. We're limiting it to hotel guests, as Mr. Manny said, so we don't see why that should trigger either an environmental concern, because if, if, if it's a concern about more people eating, they're either going to eat in their room in our restaurant, which most of them do, or if they're at the pool, they might order a, a sandwich or a drink. They made a comment in the staff report that the reason they're taking us from one space per room to two is that we are modifying 50% of the structure, which is the only way under your code, and you all, we all know the 50% rule, but we're not touching the hotel, we're not expanding the hotel in any way. They're saying, because we're changing the parking, they say by 50%, but actually, the area of parking that is being used for the pool is one-third, so even that doesn't hold water. So again, I get back to things that were a surprise to us. I didn't know what their theory was when they first asked me not too long ago to file the variance to deal with the underparking, because they wanted to take the position that the code required two parking spaces per room. Now I see the reasoning, and it's just fallacious, it would not hold up in a court of law. The concerns from Public Works really, there've been three reports from Public Works. We had one that was just fine, then when the memo went out saying that we had to now consider the, the pool area to be an expansion of the restaurant by 44 seats, that tripped the wire on what John Jaroslawski's report said we could have in terms of the total number of restaurant seats. So then, then one came out that went from four conditions to eight conditions, and highlighted that problem. Then our consultant went- Then our consultant went and got Yaroslavsky to again clarify that unless you're saying there's 44 more seats in the pool, we don't have a problem. And then, I thought we were home free. We got, on the 12th, last week, 12/12, we got a Public Works review that was backed down to four items. And the only item that was troublesome for us is not any longer. They wanted to condition it on the crosswalk. Well, I just saw an email that said we should have the permit in a day or two. Mr. Manny's being conservative and thinking, "Well, maybe it takes..." And we've already posted the bond, we filled all the paperwork out. Caltrans has approved everything. There's no more design work. It's just a matter of them actually stamping and issuing a permit. So anyway, and now I'm hearing that there are all these problems from Public Works that aren't in the 12/12 memo, and we have not submitted anything new. So I don't know where that came from. And then the, that takes care of the environmental, the parking. I hope we can get a list tonight. I now want to, would you like to hear from the traffic engineer? I know Commissioner Uring would. Let's do that tonight. This is Aaron Green of Hirsch and Green.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairperson. I just have a few key points that I think should be mentioned. And the first one is about the parking. I think that was pretty much covered. By our calculations, there would be a total of 66 required parking spaces. With the addition across the street at the Hertz lot, there will be a total of 74 provided. Now, there would be eight surplus in addition to the, there would be 16 additional spaces. Eight would be, additional would be required for the additional restaurant area to bring that to code and would leave a surplus of eight after that. So that should be covered. We also did a parking demand study where we went out and counted the number of spaces that were actually being occupied currently today at the hotel parking, the valet area. And we forecasted out and adjusted that for 100% room occupancy as well as full restaurant capacities through our study period times during the midday, during the lunch period, and then during the evening dinner periods. And we calculated that a total of 51 spaces would be needed. That would be the demand during each of those times. So that would leave a surplus of 23 spaces in excess that would be not utilized or be extra spaces. The next item is the valet traffic that would be accommodated by the addition of the parking spaces across the street and how the traffic, the vehicles would be taken across the street from, to and from that offsite parking location. The, we did, we did some calculations for that as well. And the most, the maximum number of trips going to the valet, the offsite valet location and coming back to return a vehicle to the owner at the hotel was, there would be 26 during the midday going to, turning left into the Hertz lot, and there would be 27 returning to the hotel. Now, we also did a gap study so that we could determine if there would be enough gaps to accommodate that number of vehicles turning left across PCH. And that gap study revealed that the, turning left into the Hertz driveway, the minimum number of cars that could be accommodated in one hour period would be 92 vehicles. So well above the number of 26 that would be using the left turn to go into the Hertz in one hour. The minimum number turning into the hotel, the number of vehicles that could be accommodated by the gaps in PCH is 152. Now, there was also some question brought up whether our study, because we collected data in October, whether that would be sufficient to represent the peak summer periods when there's maybe more traffic in, along PCH. And as a matter of fact, I, we looked at the average daily volumes from the Caltrans website that identified the peak month to be between 44,500 and 47,500 vehicles per hour, per day during that peak month. Now, our data that we collected, we collected five different days of data, and those numbers ranged from just under 44,000 to just over 49,000. And our, those, those data points were between 88% and 104% of the average maximum peak daily trips that were counted by Caltrans. We took it a step further and said, "Okay, if, in fact, the, the data that we collected was a little bit skewed, it wasn't during the peak period. Let's just reduce the number of vehicles that could be accommodated by the gaps that we observed. If we reduce that by 50%, which is very conservative, we still would be able to accommodate 46 left turns into the Hertz driveway and 76 left turns into the hotel driveway, still well above those that, that we say that the demand would be at full capacity of the hotel and restaurant." That's the key points that I wanted to bring up, so.
Okay, thank you. We do have one more speaker. Norm?
Sure. I think that the, the information from John Yaroslavsky has already been stated, and that's what I was here to discuss. So I'm going to give the rest of my time to...
I don't know if it works that way. Let us, let us start to ask you questions, okay? So...
That's even better.
Because I want to keep with...
Because I have no rebuttal left.
Close to our protocol.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Yeah, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And what I want to suggest is that we, in question form, lay out what our sticking points are at this point. And I don't know, it could be towards staff, it could be towards the applicant, it could be towards somewhere in the middle. But that's what I'm going to suggest at this point.
I would suggest that we pick topics and have everybody, for example, the restaurant, pool, Pakistan, you know, so we don't have it scattered all over the place. But if you want, just scatter them all over the place.
That's fair. That's basically the same thing I was saying, just you put a little more structure to it. All right. Where do you want to start, John? I know you have somewhere.
Oh, I can start, but I don't, I don't really have somewhere.
What's your topic?
Let me see. Okay. Well, first, I want to ask about the restaurant. And this is first directed at staff. I was at the first hearing when, when they got approved. I guess it was 10, 12, 15 years ago. By the way, I want to comment that you guys are on the fast track. Last hotel we dealt with was 21 years. So you're on the fast track. It was very specific that it was for hotel guests only. And then we find out, oh, it's always been, they've always violated that. Was that just because staff never, or the city never enforced it, or what?
As you know, the code enforcement program is primarily complaint-driven. And I'm not aware of complaints that we've received about that issue until fairly recently. Something was forwarded about that, or someone had encountered, I believe it was an online ad for, you know, some sort of a special at the restaurant for the general public. And so that was brought to our attention.
So is it still allowed to be 1,370 feet? Or whatever it is?
We have not, we have not opened a code enforcement case or anything during the time that they've been processing this amendment to try to, or this, these applications to try to rectify that.
Okay, and as part of food service, you have the deck area. And they say they're going to have snacks, and it's going to be for guests only, like the Surf Rider motel. But is there any restriction on full-service meals out there? And for example, if, if the outside guests filled up the restaurant and the guests in the hotel obviously get a seat, do they get a seat out on the, by the pool?
I mean, at this point, we don't have any control over the menus in either location, inside or outside.
But that would have a big impact on water use. So there's a difference whether you get potato chips and a beer or steak dinner.
Well, the issue I brought up on that, too, is events. Events could really skew that.
Oh, absolutely.
And that, that's where something I discussed, you know, if it went that far to putting, you know, conditions on. Because that, that's an easy one to see.
Yeah. Okay, now, well, you can comment, sure. We're just trying to come up with questions, but sure.
I mean, the, the two things are, we're not going to seat anybody but hotel guests at the pool, and events require permits, so you'll regulate that.
Okay, but the question is, could I walk into the pool if I was a hotel guest and get lobster's thermidor and...
You're going to get what I, what I will call a pool menu.
Okay.
Like a burger or something. It's just a pool menu, just snacks.
Okay, so you would not object to us putting some condition like we put on the Surf Rider Hotel about what can be served?
Can I ask what the difference is? I mean, why? I hear you, but I'm wondering why.
Why is, we're talking about a capacity of a restaurant. They're saying, "Don't count that because all we're going to do is give them potato chips and drinks out by the pool. It's not a full meal."
I didn't hear that, actually.
Aren't we, if your concern is wastewater, then the issue, really, the gatekeeper on this is going to be the Regional Water Quality Control Board, isn't it?
Yeah, but that's not my concern.
Water's not your concern?
Water's part of it because they have to calculate it in there. But the concern is, we're being told the restaurant is this, when theoretically, it can be 5,000 square feet bigger, which is a significant amount.
Because of water?
No, because of parking.
Ah, parking. But it's central air use, that's only for the guests, that outdoor seating.
76 people could sit out there.
And they've stated that it's only guests out in the pool.
76 people could sit out there.
Of their guests.
But it's still the same people, matter. I mean, it's still the same, if we have 80 people in the hotel, it's the same 80 people. If they eat in the restaurant or they eat there, it's still the same.
Here's my question. This is something that you can answer next time.
Please.
You, you, you open table, you open your computer in the morning, the whole restaurant's full with people that aren't in the hotel. Okay?
Sure.
You got reservations. Where do you put the people in the hotel? On the pool deck. So, or you put the other people on the pool deck. But you're overbooked. And so the question is, the area where you say there's no food service other than pool snacks, when what we did with Surf Rider is different. We said you can't have, you can't serve warm food. Okay? How do we keep that from becoming a restaurant? Because we already have seen the restaurant triple in size almost without following this last CUP.
I know it's not going to be a problem, but let me explain two different things. One is, the hotel manager is saying he definitely will have a pool service menu. It will not be the full menu, number one. Number two, I know from before he owned it, as a resident, 30 years, there were times when I would call to try to go to that hotel restaurant, and they would say, or I might even, once I was there, and they said, "We can't give you the tables because we always have pre-reservations for hotel guests, and we expect that even beyond that, they're all going to want to be out there at sunset, so you can't eat there." I mean, anybody running a good hotel knows that if you start turning your hotel guests away from your prime restaurant, you're in trouble.
This is my exact point. But my, my real point is, we have to be assured that that deck, and this is a question you can come up with an answer with later.
We can write a condition.
That deck does not turn into a restaurant because for over 10 years, you violated the last CUP.
We didn't, the ex-owner did.
The ex-owner, well, you're still doing it.
Well, we, we have not changed anything. What we're trying to do is to correct the past and figure out whatever the past owner did, we're trying to fix. That's why we bought the lot across the street. That's why we're doing everything we're doing.
No, we don't want to have an adversarial. And what I'm trying to do is the questions.
I understand.
And, and the question, you know, if you're driving 80 miles an hour now and it's in the parking lot, the speed restriction is 40, you can't say, "Well, gee, I'm going to just keep going 80 until I figure out what to do." That's, that's the point. And right now, you're driving two and a half times faster than you should be on the restaurant. Now, the staff is fine with that for now. But our problem here, just as we ask you these questions, is our city attorney has told us, once we grant you a CUP, you have it until 30,099. Okay, you have it forever. So we can't come back and change it.
I won't be around, but...
Oh, I know. But that's why we have to be specific because we have no other choice.
I understand.
Okay. Now, my next question on the pool area and the service, in my mind, is, why do you have a 428-square-foot pool and over 5,000-square-foot deck?
For people to lay down and to jump in the pool. One of the main issue, why do we want a pool? I mean, let's start the question. Why do we want a pool? Why are we spending all this money to buy a pool? Because when you have high tide, you have no ocean. When people come into the hotel, they have nothing to look at. They can sit there, look at the ocean after 24 hours. They get tired and they leave. But if we get them a pool that can come and lay down in the pool, it's not the pool, it's just to lay down and get a suntan so we can get people to stay two or three days.
So my question would be, have you ever, ever done any kind of study on what a 43-room hotel needs for a deck versus eliminating part of the parking?
Well, we limited it. We did. It's part of the parking. This is only 20, this is one side.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is, that side is 5,000 and something square feet.
Correct.
Could it be 3,000? That's my question.
It wouldn't look, it wouldn't fit the area. It wouldn't fit anything because we also have, in the bottom, you have the septic tanks. So you can't just go ahead and move septic tank. We're trying to put the pool where it's no septic tanks.
Okay.
Okay? And then we're trying to put the chairs around and so people, so if we have only 40 chairs or 30 chairs, people to lay down to get a suntan and be able to stay an extra day. That's really why this whole thing started.
Yeah, now, I asked you at the meeting we had about events, which Mike just brought up.
We can't have an event without permission from the city. It's always that way in any other city, I don't know, but Malibu. But we have to go pull a permit to get an event.
Like a wedding?
Yeah.
Is that true, Bonnie? In a hotel?
That's something that could be addressed in the CUP conditions. If you wanted to look at the, I mean, the, the one thing that we're addressing or recommending approval of is the CUP. You could, you could start with that if you want. I mean, if you want to continue with inquiring about different aspects of the project and stuff, that's fine, but you could start with the CUP, for example. And if you didn't get through all of that, you could, you know, get through as much as everybody had agreement about and then come back and add additional conditions based on where you get what the other variances and things.
Okay, all I'm doing now is just trying to come up with questions.
And I'm here to answer it for you.
One question we have to ask ourselves, that the staff believes the pool deck should add to the parking requirements, apparently, and they don't agree. Do, since only guests can use the pool deck, do we feel it adds to the parking requirements?
No, I don't.
I don't, I don't know how I could decide that right now. So I'd like a better explanation from either staff, a staff on...
Stephanie could walk you through how we made the calculations for the pool deck, if you like. Commissioner Genesee, do you have a question or a concern?
Not on that specifically, although I raised with you, uh, when we talked, uh, today, my concern about the determination that the change in the use of the parking area, constituted a fifty, uh, a greater than fifty percent, uh, alteration, but, and, we'll have to get to that, huh?
Well, uh, I'll ask Stephanie to address that and the parking question.
All right, so we evaluated the parking requirements based on local implementation plan section three point fourteen point three that provides the following hotel parking requirement. It says that for a hotel, you need to park it for two spaces for each room. Then it says plus one space for the average per shift number of employees. Then it adds plus one space for each one hundred square feet of gross floor area used for consumption of food or beverages or public recreation areas. Plus one space for each five fixed seats or for every thirty-five square feet of assembly area where there are no fixed seats in meeting rooms or other assembly areas. So for the purposes of the pool deck area, we looked at it, um, in the same way that we looked at the outdoor seating for the restaurant, which is one space for each five fixed seats, considering it assembly area.
And then will you talk about the fifty percent in the parking?
Could I address that?
Hang on a sec.
Cause that, that's, that applies to where you have meeting.
If we, if we, if we raise the questions here and, and you receive the questions, I think we're gonna move along a lot more quickly. If, if you debate with us on each of these issues, we're gonna be here till.
Yeah, we're, we don't have that much longer as it is. It's getting late. Um, so that, that's an issue we have to figure out among ourselves. Does that, I mean, my initial thought is no, since it's real, just for hotel guests, but something we can talk about.
I just have a quick question, Stephanie, on that. Uh, on, on sixteen of thirty-nine, you, you list LIP thirteen three point fourteen point three, and it says that you need a parking space for every hundred square feet of public recreation area. Now, we didn't use that standard, did we?
No, I'd like to explain, originally, when we were evaluating the pool deck area, we were looking at it as a public recreation area, but then when we received the feedback that it was for hotel guests only, um, determining that public recreation area would not apply. But when we were told that, that area would be used for consumption of food or beverages, uh, we went back to the original conditional use permit and looked at how parking was evaluated for the restaurant and applied that same standard. Um, it's interesting, because for gross floor area used for consumption of food or beverages, it refers to gross floor area, which would be internal space. So if you had a restaurant that only had an outdoor patio, how would you park that? So it, it was instead treated as an assembly area. And in the original conditional use permit, um, that was also for hotel guests only. So for that reason is why we use the assembly area.
And obviously, there's not a perfect fit with our parking code and, um, what to do with an outdoor pool deck that serves snacks and is only for, for hotel guests. So this is, this was our approach to reach some sort of a reasonable, um, approximation based on what's done in the past.
But, but it's still a debate. It could be a food service area also. Now, you, you said you, you used public service area?
No, so we used assembly area. We did not use public recreation area.
That's like a lobby?
Assembly area, I would, I would think of any open area within a restaurant allowed for, or, no, sorry, within a hotel allowing for free seating, where people can gather or, or wait for people or, or congregate.
And, and the requirement for that is how much per square feet?
Well, it's one space for each five fixed seats or for one space for every thirty-five square feet of air, assembly area.
So it's.
So in this case, there's, they're, they're specifying the number of seats that they would have at the pool deck, and if you, if you applied the food service standard of a hundred square feet, um, of square footage of the deck, that would have an incredible amount of space, parking spaces.
Or thirty-five would be much more.
And thirty-five would be much more, so we, we were trying to find some way to apply the code that we have and reach a reasonable, um, conclusion, given that this is for guests only.
But my question would be, how many s- seats were you saying that were gonna be?
Uh, the plans show forty-four seats.
Correct.
Forty-four seats.
So even though.
So that's forty-four parking spaces?
One space for every five seats, so nine, nine parking spaces.
And you think that, even though it's only for hotel guests, that there will be an increase in parking needed? Is that why?
I can't make that determination. I can only apply the parking code. I'm hopeful that the traffic analysis and the parking analysis that's done, that it also, um, looks at, you know, the seventy-eight seats proposed for the restaurant along with the forty-four seats. If they had covered all of that in their traffic analysis and, or parking analysis, and it was reviewed by the traffic engineer, then that would be the solution to answer this question. But based upon the information I have, I only have the codec requirement.
Okay.
One of the questions that comes to mind for me on this is, is, uh, just a concept of secondary use. Is that at all relevant here? Because the deck is just kind of there for the same guests. I mean, conceptually, I just don't know where else to put it.
Um, so what do you mean by?
So my, my, my thought, kind of what Mike and I were saying earlier, is that, um, you know, it seems to me, I come to the hotel as a guest, I hang out my room, and then I'm gonna go hang out the pool. I mean, the pool is there for the enjoyment of the guests, not really for any other use, gathering or otherwise.
That's, that's a conclusion that the commission could, could make if they, if they don't, if you disagree with the, our application of the standard, or you think that some other thing would apply, um, that's, that's your discretion.
Got it. So there, the, right now, it's nine seats, according to the table that's, uh, that's kind of summarizing on page eighteen of thirty-nine. There's been discussion, we could go up as high as, I think, forty or some seats if we went one seat per hundred square feet, or we could go as low as zero, and it's at our discretion, is what you're saying, on that item only.
Yeah, because there is, there is a variance at, for, um, the parking standards that is part of the application, so you could make a determination on what you feel is a reasonable.
And do we, do we have a guesstimate of how many additional employees are involved in having the pool?
That was, that was some information that we had asked for, that we, we didn't get, about whether, what staffing would be involved with that or, um, operating the valet.
Yeah, I know, I think we discussed that briefly when we met, but I don't actually remember the answer right now.
But the answer is, we gave you the employee count. Uh, the, we have a, um, a beach service that we sort of staff, but, you know, it's not usually very useful, because the tide keeps getting higher, even during low tide, sometimes it's too high. So that person may staff that, but an outside service is gonna do the valet, and outside service is gonna do the pool maintenance. So we're not gonna have somebody
Well, I don't.
under our employment doing that.
I don't think we're talking about pool maintenance. That's, that's a, is there gonna be a pool boy? Does he bring you your towels?
We already have one in the, in the front by, by the ocean. We're gonna take him out, and we're gonna put him in the pool, and we might add one more person.
Okay, so it's very important to us that we have, just so you know, we have a accurate count of staff, because we had another hotel that told us, I think they told us eleven employees, now they have seventy, okay, per shift. So, um, that's something we're gonna have to regulate.
That's a restaurant. I, I do think that, I think what you're gonna find is that guests are gonna go to the pool to check in, whether they're going to the, if they wanna go to the beach and get towels and stuff like that. But we will take another look at that and give you a final, final on it. But again, it's a very small hotel. You're not dealing with the kind of hotel that's gonna put, you know, eighty people around the pool all at once. It's not gonna happen.
There's not enough guests, um, yeah.
John, we're so, forty-seven rooms. We're really less than that, because we closed one room to do it as a spa for people to get a massage. So we're really less, we're forty-six rooms, so, and we're never a hundred percent occupied, you know? The, we're about eighty-one percent occupied year-round, and we're trying to get more people in during the week, because that's really your slow time between Sunday to Wednesday. So we're hoping people come in, lay by the pool, and get an extra day.
Now, the, the point I wanna make is, our main concern, when you get down to everything, is parking, okay? And you just mentioned you're gonna have somebody giving a massage.
We do have that now.
Yeah, but more than likely.
But it's an outside service. They come and leave.
When we do this CUP, more than likely, we don't care if it's outside or inside, you gotta park somewhere. So when we do this CUP, we're probably, and I can't speak for the, we're probably gonna say, you can have X number of employees. That's it. And so if you undercount, somebody may come in four or five years from ago and go, your CUP could get pulled. So that's, see, that's what's happening with the other restaurants we're looking at.
But we're not a restaurant, John. I mean, I understand.
Well, I know, but we.
We're only thirteen hundred square feet. That's all we are.
No, you're a forty-three-room hotel, and, and all.
Forty, forty-six, forty-seven.
Let me, I just wanted to set the stage here.
Yes, sir.
We got burned believing
In the restaurants.
other commercial entities in the neighborhood.
We understand that.
What they told us. So more than likely, we will put in your CUP what you're allowed and not believe you. We'll just, we may believe you, but that should be accurate, because it might burn you when you, you go over it.
But we're not changing anything, John, except adding a pool.
But you need a new CUP.
For the pool. Okay, I think, I think we got that. Um, Trevor, I need to amend my, uh, disclosure based on this conversation. I remembered something. My daughter was the pool, pool person for about two weeks at one point. Three years ago, four years ago. Um, but, and what triggered their memory is she quit after about two weeks, because it was really heavy carrying the chairs up and down from the beach, because the tide chased, there was no beach a lot of the day. And she felt guilty having to ask the bartender and people to carry for, because it was too heavy. There you go. That's my disclosure.
Are you sure you don't, you're not a secret owner?
Yeah, yeah. I wanna just go through the compliance part of it here. And it, it's, it's based on the assumption that the one space per room, um, requirement is not grandfathered. And, and so it, it makes it difficult for me to see the numbers. So at some point, what I would like to see, well, I have some, first of, I guess I have some questions. If we assume, looking at the, at, um, eighteen of thirty-nine, talking about the existing hotel, if the requirement is one space per room, is there a variance required? If you go over to the right column, variance seventeen oh thirty-seven for the deficit. Does that go away if we have it as one space per room?
There's dependencies, though. They're just like, you know, it depends on our decision on what we do with the pool area, because it's either zero, nine, or fifty, you know?
Well, I think that's covered in the proposed additional indoor and outdoor restaurant stuff.
But i- it's additive, right?
But those are different, uh, kind of different. Um, you're right. No, I guess you're right as far as the indoor, proposed additional indoor dining area space. Um, but, but they, they are adequately parked, just considering the, the, the hotel itself, the, the, the rooms. They're adequately parked, right?
Yep, the parking is legal non.
If, if we assume that it's one per.
Yes, the, the parking currently is legal non-conforming, so I, I, on page seventeen for the total required parking section, there are, I broke it down in the two options. If you maintain the legal non-conforming of the hotel, because that's, that was an option, the total required parking is eighty spaces. So you would maintain the fifty-eight existing legal non-conforming. We would add the twenty-two additional spaces, um, for the proposed improvements. So it would be eighty spaces. It's, it's just if we parked it under current code, then the total required parking, um, is about a hundred and thirty spaces.
Okay, so fifty-eight and the total required parking would be eighty spaces, with the twenty-two additional parking spaces required for the proposed improvements.
Your, your mic's off.
And they've got that, right?
But, but that includes, uh, treating the pool as dining area.
And the applicant says they need, the applicant says they need sixty-six, not eighty. So there's a lot of differences.
Difference in opinion on that.
So, so yes, Dan.
I'm illustrating graphically how confused I am.
So yes, the variance would be required.
Join the club.
I'd say the variance would be required other way. It's just the amount of the deficiency would change based upon whether you accepted the legal non-conforming or you asked them to bring it up to current code. And then the numbers would also change if you didn't want the nine additional spaces, which then you would be at seventy-nine required spaces, and they're proposing sixty-six.
Okay, another question, then. The, the variance for having the parking space above, uh, three hundred feet, is, does that go away with, if they get their crosswalk? Does the variance go away? I mean, I know the commission still can't approve or disapprove it, but, but does the variance go away?
Yes, that's correct. The variance would go away.
Okay, because that, that's a big issue for me, because I have a hard time figuring out what the, how to make, make the variance findings. If the variance goes away, it's a different story.
Yeah, that's a good point, and I, I wanna touch into that area with what time we have left a little bit, too. I think the parking and the, the across-the-street lot, even though we're slightly, I don't know where the gray area is, but it's hard to figure. Is, it, the parking study gentleman is here. So what on, on my list would be is, you've talked about the gap. We don't, you just, just, this is stuff for later. We don't have to, you don't have to answer it now, to be honest. I understand your gap analysis. I understand you're studying the traffic, and all that sounds good. For me, making a finding on that also will involve a couple of things. Number one is understanding that, that we're increasing safety on PCH, not making it worse. That's one of those dangerous stretches in Malibu. And so, including, I told the apps, I, applicants, I pulled somebody out of an upside-down car in front of their place while eating dinner there once. It's just narrow, and people go fast, and stuff happens. Um, so I'm really curious in a traffic study about what happens with that crosswalk. Now, I understand, I've been told it slows cars down, it makes it safer. I, uh, I need, I need to s- I need to see something on this, maybe from the city, too. I don't know who, but I, I would like a better understanding. And then the second part of that is, great, I can understand maybe why a crosswalk makes the highway safer there.
But it's, it's a light crosswalk with a light on it.
A light one, yes. We, yeah, we discussed that. Thank you. That's an important point, very important point, and I'm, that, that helps a lot. But also, it's the short distance going across from the hotel to the middle, then the middle to the lot, and then the lot to the middle, or back across. That scares me.
I have a video on the PowerPoint show that was loaded earlier before the meeting started. It shows that movie. Would you like to see that?
Um, I'd say with the time we have, maybe I could ask it gets sent to us, so we could review it, um, because I know we're not gonna finish today. Um, but I'm very, it, that's very important to me, too, as far as safety.
And, uh, there was a study done.
Here, if you, if, I hate to ask, if you're gonna speak, please come up to the mic so we can get it on the, on the record.
Uh, there was a safety study done by another engineer that, uh, res- uh, revealed that it would, with the crosswalk, that it wouldn't be a safety issue. Is that correct?
It was done for the city.
Oh.
It's the city's, uh, PCH safety study.
Does that also address the car, the valets bringing them across and back? Because I mean, I under, I kinda can see the crosswalk being safer, uh, the, the lit crosswalk, which I think is important, but I wanna understand also the traffic going back and forth.
I think the video will help you see how that, how that works, and with traffic and with an animation.
Great, I'd love to see that, and I know I've opened up questions in this area by these gentlemen. Steve actually asked first, so Steve, go.
Uh, just some, some comments you gotta think about for your traffic study, okay? And, and one, I have no idea how you can do a traffic study in October and December and, and update that to what's going on in June, July, in the summer. I mean, we've made some terrible decisions on a planning, planning commission's made terrible decisions regarding traffic. I don't want this to be another one, all right? Uh, I'm, have you driven in, on PCH in the summer?
I, I've been there, yes, yes.
What's, what's the difference between traffic in October and, and July? Well, just give me the difference. What do you think the difference is?
Well, I can tell you that the, the number of trips.
No, no, no. Tell me what the difference of the, the traffic looks like between.
It's going slower.
That's the only difference?
There's more of it.
How much more?
Well, I'll, let me tell you that. Um, there's.
Okay.
He said you were eighty-five percent.
I can tell you that, that, that we did traffic counts, uh, daily traffic counts, and we compared those to the peak.
My own personal perspective is that, that, again, I don't, I don't know how you can do an October and come up with an accurate reflection in Ju- in June and July. That's just my perspective. You may be able to do it, but you could give me a better story than you got so far. The other thing you wanna think about, this is, I'm Uber. Somewhere in your traffic study, if I were you guys, I would have some reflection that says, pe- more and more people are using Uber or Lyft or whatever, okay? That's gonna have an impact on your parking. Somehow, I would, you know, the world's changing. I would think you guys. I would think you guys are going to have some study of that to, to, that's going to impact what you're trying to do down there, I think, right?
So you're saying it would reduce the number of spaces we would need?
I'm saying, you should, look, you're the traffic guy. All I'm saying is Uber, Uber is changing what's happening. And somehow, your traffic study should reflect that, okay?
Steve, you're totally correct.
We went with the most conservative-
You're totally correct. We do count them every day.
Well, I just say, he's doing the traffic study, when you come back, if I were you, I would do that, okay?
We're gonna, we're gonna give him the study that shows we're getting up to four hundred a month.
However, okay?
Let him explain to you why he can count in October and then go to the Caltrans data-
If we're not, if we're going to get through, I'm just trying to raise issues, okay?
Easy answer is Caltrans has the data for him of the peak months.
I understand. I just, I just don't, okay? You, you say, in your traffic study, you say use empirical data that you use to figure out how long it takes to do the, what kind of empirical data did you, did you do the drive?
Uh, yeah, my partner did the drive. I videoed it from the rooftop and we did it for hours. And we, we collected all the data for, all the data's in that traffic study as in the appendix.
When you put the, the stop, the, the traffic light and the crosswalk in, what does that do to your gap analysis?
That's gonna, that's gonna improve the gaps.
How is that?
Because when the light turns red, traffic will not be able to go beyond the stop bar at the crosswalk, which will flush out the downstream, which will allow left turns. Because there'll be a flushed out, the signals at each end, at the pier and down the south-
What's going to happen is the, let's say you're, you're coming, you're turning out of the hotel, going to the parking lot.
Yes.
Traffic light stops, that traffic is going to back up on the going west side, right?
It's, it, it could, yes, it will back up past-
It'll back up way past, and the amount of time it's going to take you to make that turn is going to be a bear.
And-
Just, I'm just saying, when I, when I read the study, I mean, the, the gap stuff that you did, again, trying to reflect it of what, what's going to be the actual impact when you get to that July timeframe, I think you got to give me a better story than that.
The video that I keep referring to also shows-
Send me the video.
It also shows the, what happens when traffic backs up in front of a driveway.
Send me the video. Let's take a look at the video.
He's got it right here.
No, no, I'm saying, we're just trying to get through the issues tonight, right?
But I want to ask some-
I give you one other thing you have to think, when I told my wife about the, the park, the traffic light, she thought it was a great idea. And the reason was because a lot of the visitors who come in park all over PCH, gives them another way to safely get across the street.
That is correct.
Right?
And that's one of the things, we also worked with the coastal commission on that and to do the Caltrans. One thing I'd like to add with this whole parking, we are not a restaurant, we're not a Nobu or a big restaurant. We are really a hotel. So eighty percent of our cars were going to move there, they're going to be moved and parked there. This is a storage facility, this is not a run back and forth. They're all going to be parked and, at night, and if you are checking out in the morning, we're going to have our people go in there and pick up the cars in the middle of the night and bring them into the hotel.
Okay, however, right over the scheme. Look, traffic to me is the most important thing in Malibu.
I'm totally with you, but I'm saying-
Okay, so I just want a good traffic study when we come back that sort of gives us the information you really need to make those decisions. I'm not trying to argue with you, okay?
I understand, but I'm trying to explain is that we're really not, not the Nobu or not the, we are very-
He can do that when he does his traffic study to make sure we understand that.
All right.
And I, just to, to Aaron really quickly, really at the core, what Steve's calling out is that when you say you saw eighty-eight to a hundred and four percent of what Caltrans reported in your observations in October versus July-
That's right.
Then, then Steve, his experience is saying something very different. And so your methodology is just make sure they're aligned, because that does not line up with experience. Really, that's what Steve's saying.
Right, that, that was the only thing that we can compare it to, is what would it be in the peak period, the peak month, which Caltrans states on their website that the peak months-
Understood. I'd be concerned, what, what did they state as the peak in October in your other, did you normalize against that? It sounds like you didn't. That's, that's what Steve's saying.
But we reduced the number of vehicles that could be accommodated by the gaps by fifty percent.
I just have a very difficult-
Which is huge.
I just have a very difficult time believing you can take October and come up with an accurate reflection of July. Maybe you can't-
Let's, let's just say that, that the October data is, is fifty percent off. Let's say that we reduced the number of gap, vehicles that can be accommodated by fifty percent. We still have plenty of-
It's curious, it could be, you, you're taking a lot of risk with that because you got a huge gap.
Humorously, what might be part of the problem is in the traffic count in the midsummer, is the cars can't move. It's just gridlocked. Where's that video it was going just a second ago?
I don't want to ask that question.
I'll show you what happens if you, if you take just a sec.
Not unless you want to get out of here tonight.
We want to keep asking questions. I'm, I'm good all night, I don't- One more question on the, on the crosswalk, on the crosswalk is, I read that the crosswalk was also part, there seems to be a crosswalk as part of a settlement. Is that the same crosswalk, the one in agreement with the coastal commission?
It is, in fact. It, what we're doing with the coastal commission as part of the consent agreement, because, and you know the story, I don't have to tell you the little story about the stairs that never got built, we're building them. We also are constructing a path with coastal access signage, so that, and they liked the crosswalk idea a lot because they don't want people running across the street and they want people to be able to find the stairs. So from the sidewalk in front of the hotel, the other side of the crosswalk, we're going to have coastal access signs. And we're going to be building on, Craig Sapp is helping us right now because it's going to be on his property right next to our fence, a pathway so people can get over there.
So that's why you've got the crosswalk so far down the road because you've been dealing with this longer than your, probably a lot of the-
No, no, this was, the, the crosswalk's where the city wants it, I mean, everybody met together on the crosswalk.
The city approved it.
It's, it's really Caltrans drives the crosswalk and the signal as much as anybody. And, and the city worked with Caltrans on agreeing to the right location, right?
And it has to be within three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Right.
Nothing to do with the stairs, though.
It's ten o'clock, are we, is the plan to continue this item? And if it, my question is, for Trevor, is if we're going to continue it, are we going to reopen the hearing? What are, what are the rules about communication between the applicants and members of the commission while we're in continuance?
Yeah. We've, we've, we've held the public hearing tonight, then there shouldn't be contact with the applicant or receive extra, extra information about this unless we're going to reopen the hearing when this comes back. So I would caution everyone not to, you know, after this hearing is over, not to discuss the item further.
Well, since we, we asked a lot of questions that we want answers to, maybe we should reopen the public hearing then. Because we need information. We're so lacking on detail.
They can bring the, the information back, the information can come back to you at the next public hearing, but you shouldn't have, you've-
But if it comes like it did at this one, we once again won't have time to absorb it.
Well, that's, that's my question. Is there any way, is there any way we can require a staff report that's more than ten days before the hearing? With supplements or something? Because quite frankly, even Jeff's brain is spinning on this one. And mine is definitely spinning. So if we have all these answers, is there any way we can get it fifteen days before or something? Or is that bad?
Well, fifteen days before would be a hearing before the hearing.
No, no, just a staff report.
Yeah.
And personally, I'd love to be able to discuss this more with staff and the applicant. And I wouldn't mind reopening public hearing. It didn't take long today. I, I just feel like this is a really difficult project. It landed on us like a giant spaceship and it's really hard to absorb.
What I'm saying is when you, we come back, you can ask more questions of them, but in between, not to have contact with anyone about this item.
Mr. Chairman-
Or what happens.
You go to jail.
This is bad.
The result if, if we had conversation? I just don't know what that means.
Well, we could run into Brown Act violations for, you'd be deliberating outside, or if you consult with other people, you could run into Brown Act issues if you do that since the public hearing has been closed at this point. So the discussion for the item needs to occur at the public hearing in the public, and that's what you're considering when you're making your decision.
Yeah. Okay. Can I ask a question?
Mr. Chairman Pearson, may I? I'm, I'm not sure I'm understanding. You're saying that because the public hearing is going to be continued, they cannot receive information or talk to us?
Yeah, like I just requested to be able to see this video and have it sent to me. I've never seen it.
It can be submitted to staff, staff can, if there's going to be another staff report that's going to come out on this item, and then there'll be more information that'll be distributed.
So I guess what we're hearing from legal counsel, whether I like it or not, is that everything has to go through staff and the staff will give it to us.
I, I guess I just wanted to understand, why is that, Trevor?
To avoid any Brown Act violations.
Which, which violation? I know the Brown Act pretty well. Which, what are you talking about?
Well, we've closed the public hearing there, we can't, they can't receive additional information outside of this. It needs to occur at the pub, in front of the public. All deliberations have to occur.
Well, we haven't even opened up four B yet.
True, we haven't done four B yet.
Four A, we're on four A, we may get to four B.
But I would caution you that there, that there is connection between the two.
I mean, if they close the public hearing now, continue four A and four B to the, to whatever meeting it gets continued to, they can then reopen a public hearing for four A. I mean, I, because honestly, there's so many complicated issues here that have to be vetted that unless we're able to have some back and forth and understand exactly what answer somebody wants or what information they want, it's going to be very difficult.
Isn't the issue, Trevor, that, that as long, if we, we could reopen the public hearing at a subsequent date, and we would either have to have everything come to us through staff, or alternatively, we would have to, again, rediscover everything that we had received, every conversation we have had to had and so on, right?
That's correct.
Good luck. But basically, we can, next hearing, this is why we're giving, correct me if I'm wrong, that's why we're asking questions, so the next hearing, we'll get the answers.
And they could submit, they could submit written material, you submit materials-
And you can submit written material through the staff. I do have a traffic engineer question. Okay? Because I think we're beating a dead horse here, right? When it comes back, I want to understand exactly where the crosswalk is and how that relates to the exit, in, in and out. If, you know, if it's in front of the in, it's going to block a lane. All the way back, you'll never make a left turn when the light's on. And if it's on the other side of the, right turn out to go over the parking lot, it's going to do the same thing. And so that's critical to know whether you can make these turns. The other thing I'm going to want to know is, people have mentioned, oh, you can discount because of Uber and Lyft. Well, that, to me, that's the future, and I'm on the Adamson House Board, we have had tremendous problems with Uber and Lyft when we have more than a couple of them show up. They park on the highway, okay? Stop traffic. Because there's no place to park out there. So I am not convinced that that's a plus. Now, the other thing is, I'm going to want to, I'm going to want to look into the future because we have a really big problem with the, the businesses that have gone out of control, like the biggest restaurant in California down the street from you. And we just got a report at city council about Airbnbs, which have added five hundred thousand residents to Malibu this last year, additional to what lives here. And they don't typically always cook at home. So, and that grew sixty-seven percent last year. So when you say, well, what's the future of parking, I'm going to up it a little. The other thing is, we got sort of bamboozled on, one of our hearings actually was a hotel, where we were told traffic hasn't gone up in Malibu for twenty-five years. And that was based on the fact that they did traffic counts. But what they didn't tell us was, it was at a dead stop, you get a slower traffic count. So it's the number of cars on the highway, not how fast they pass you, that I care about.
But our study doesn't consider the number of cars going by, it considers the number of gaps that will allow our left turns to go in.
Right, and, and-
It doesn't matter if they're going zero, if you make the left.
And all I can tell you is, we all have personal experience with coast highway. And my personal experience is on many days, it's backed up from the light at the pier to Nobu. On many, many days, dead stop. So you're going to have to prove that these gaps truly exist. Because one side or the other, a lot of times, there are zero gaps.
I'd make a separate argument, that, that's that you have, like the traffic patterns that you're, if, if that was at all representative of October day you took samples, it, there's no comparison. You'd need a different-
That wasn't the video, it was the next couple of slides later that I wanted you to see.
Well, even, even so, I, I just wouldn't, I would not assume at all that you could do any linear and say, oh, fifty percent reduction. You've got to have like-for-like to do that analysis.
At the end of the day, our rooms don't grow. The room stays the same.
But the traffic does, sir. You know?
Yeah, but there's still, people have less cars or it's the same cars, so we don't change.
Right, but the concern is, just like Steve is saying, on a July afternoon, your cars haven't changed from October, but your loading is completely changed. And that, that's the concern.
That's correct, but I would probably, I would probably, I will probably deliver them at night, so I don't have to do that because people will not, you know, I have plenty of parking in my hotel, but I'm going to take and do a storage across, you see, this is where the confusion is coming in. This is a storage, a storage cars across the street.
Understood. Your, your engineer said that he has a traffic pattern which requires twenty-six or twenty-seven routes?
During the day.
And, and, no, 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 during a given day. You can try to change your timing, but it's still going to be required to make those trips.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I got one quick and I'm-
But I can add to that, that only sixty, sixty-four percent of the parking spaces for the entire, both sides are across the street. So those sixty-four, or the fifty spaces across the street are typically going to be used for overnight guests. They'll make one, when they check in, they'll send it over there and it won't come back. Most of the more in and out, like restaurant guests will park on site, which will not need to go across the street. So that's kind of an important thing that I overlooked.
Chair, I have one. And Tony, this may be, what, we want to come back in the next meeting and make sure we've got all the items identified that we're supposed to be dealing with.
Yes.
How are we going to do that? I mean, is it possible for you and some, the staff to sit down and come up with a piece of paper that says, here are, so we know that prior to going into the meeting, so there's no surprises?
And page, page eighteen looks like a good place to start, if you look at that.
I think there's some technical issues that may make that, no, no, not really. I mean, I'd need to sit down with the Mr. George and figure out whether, if you agree that we're only going to have hotel guests at the pool, that we're not really adding forty-four seats there. Because right now, they're saying it's like adding forty-four restaurant seats, then they compromised it to say they're assembly seats, which would make sense for a big hotel that has meeting rooms, where you bring a lot of people from the outside. But we're not bringing people from the outside to go sit out there.
I'm more concerned, I mean, some of that we may have to decide as we go through deliberation, right? But I mean, I'm more concerned, I don't want to have somebody come back and say, regional water quality is there when we've never heard of that before, right?
Yeah, either do I, I want to hear.
So you want, you want, we want to make sure we've got a comprehensive list of the So you want, you want, we want to make sure we've got a comprehensive list of the issues. Whether we've got them all solved before you come back, but no surprises.
I'll prepare, I'll prepare a list and I'll send it to-
They need to prepare.
They should prepare.
They should. Go ahead, you're-
I got a team that's going to do it for me, but I, I, they, they can prepare it, but probably before they get it done, I'll have one done and then they can add to it or subtract from it, that's all.
That's great, and whatever it takes, we can make progress.
And if you get that for us too, before the meeting, so we've got, we can look at that, right?
We should get that done in a few days. So, with Stephanie, is, are you going to be the point on that list? That makes sense, right? Or I can ask Bonnie?
Not from the look on her face.
Who do I coordinate with to get the list?
Stephanie's going to be out the rest of this week, so just send it to me.
Okay. So, we'll work, we'll work with Bonnie on what we think the list is.
Have we got a continued date? I have more questions.
Well, we could have questions for hours, but I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to look for a motion to continue here pretty quick.
Well, let me ask you a real quick question, staff.
You've never had a quick question in your entire life, not one.
It's a very quick question. This item requires a latte. Okay?
What?
A latte. A latte is a fairly permanent thing. If, if we do this item, I want an explanation at the next meeting. If we do this item and require a latte, and then we don't approve the use, is a latte still going to be required? And that's a question, not an answer. Because these technical things bite you.
Okay, I want to look for a motion to continue right now.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I would like to ask Rob if he has an idea of how long the traffic engineer needs to review the study. I'm assuming you would want input from the city's traffic engineer.
Oh yeah, heck yeah.
So-
And if there's revised information that the applicant is going to provide, that you would also need reviewed.
So, so a couple of things we have in here. He's, with the holidays coming up, he's going to probably finish up between now and probably another week or so. Fortunately, or unfortunately, fortunately for me, I'm going to be going on vacation. After the first of the year, won't be back until the 16th. And then I want to probably look at it, review it, meet with him, confer and find out questions and actually do a comprehensive review with him. And then get some, get some answers and back on that traffic study and going back and forth. So, I think it's going to be some questions going back and forth with the traffic between us for a while. Because just like-
I'm hearing no one up here is in a hurry. We want it right. We want to like, be able to actually make progress, where tonight, it's really tough progress. So just trying to get some of the issues out.
Okay, I'd also like to ask Craig if, is there any way we can get any kind of feel of what the Regional Water Board is going to say?
Yes.
And how long will that take?
Hopefully just a telephone call.
Could I ask a question? Craig, if, if, if they conclude that we don't, that we're going to limit the, the pool area to hotel guests, so there's nothing new happening, why do we have to do anything with water quality? I'm missing that point.
The point really surrounds around the prohibition, because this property is in the prohibition. The prohibition prohibits increases in flows. So you are going to need to demonstrate there's no increase in flow. And actually, this is something I wanted to bring up. And John Yaroslavsky's report, Part 6, it says regulatory constraints. And the proposed, sorry, the proposed tenant improvements will not increase maximum daily flows. It is not anticipated that any regulatory constraints will be violated, such as waste discharge requirement. So, by saying anticipated, I think John is saying, we need to find that answer out. That has not been done yet. And so that comes from the Regional Board, it's just a question to pose in front of them and-
But, but what are we doing that could possibly, we have the same number of rooms, same number of guests?
Well, it's, I think we need to land on the number of seats that we're really talking about, just as you said earlier.
So that is the issue. I mean, just to be clear, if we keep dancing around the issue of whether or not the pool is adding seats to the restaurant, it's not, but you get to decide that. Pardon me?
You've got to remember, the restaurant's tripling.
It's not, though, it's the-
Yes, it is. Your permit is for 500 and something square feet. It's going up to 1300 and something.
Let's just do regional water though, John. Regional, no, 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 regional water right now, it says you're not supposed to increase over whatever the, and I'm, I may be wrong. You weren't supposed, whatever the, your, your discharges were at the time Regional Water put the prohibition in, you weren't supposed to go over that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if you, if whatever they were discharging at that time, if that hasn't changed, seems to me Regional Water should not have an issue with that. Is that what you're saying?
And, and John, John actually identified the number of outlets that were, that were analyzed and we're still under that.
I understand, but I think we need to land on the total number of seats, whatever that is for the restaurant, and then decide on the flows.
You're only approved for certain number of seats, you're way over.
Yeah, except that actually, the environmental study that John had already relied on, that has already gone through the whole system, was for way more seats than we have.
And that mean, and what I'm saying is, we need an answer from Regional Board. If you cheated, do they count you cheating? Do they say, well, you cheated, that's okay, now we go from there.
Well, I guess-
That's the answer they need to give us.
Yeah, except that he's looking, this, this only happened when they added the two per room and the extra seats at the pool. So if you conclude that you'd like to see whether or not there's a problem, if you don't do that, then he's got a different question to ask the Regional Board.
Well, none of the questions have to be asked in advance, because it's, we, as we have done in many cases in the past, we could say, we could condition whatever approval, assuming we're going to get an approval. We could condition upon getting the certification from the Regional Water Quality Control Board that, that, that they approve it, that they stamp it, you know?
I agree.
Okay, is the motion seconded? It's late.
In terms of timing, the, the, this is going to sound way off in the future, but I think given the realities of Public Works and the, the applicants going back and forth with the traffic study and, and getting those issues resolved, and our legislative items that we're working on for the City Council, the first meeting in March, and also in addition to being able to provide you the report, we can try and do that sooner than 10 days in advance, although I'm not sure how that works with-
Which year?
That sounds, that sounds reasonable, that sounds pretty quick for what I'm hearing, to be honest.
Quick question.
You already said quick question.
Oh, quick question. We haven't done 4B. Can we submit questions to, to staff that they can answer? Or do we just have to wait for 4B and spring them on?
Oh, if you have questions on 4B that are, that are particular to 4B?
Yes.
I mean, you could submit stuff to staff, but I think you want to be very careful here, considering they're very intertwined.
Well, there are some specific 4B things.
The lifts or things like that?
Exactly, very specific. I wasn't even going to say them, so specific.
So is the, the motion then to continue both 4A and 4B to March 5th?
Yes, that's the motion.
Yes, that's the motion.
Can I just ask for clarity? If they close the public hearing on 4A, then we don't have the problem, right?
What's the problem?
Of being able to provide you with information during the interim.
No, you do.
Everything has to go through staff.
It either has to go through staff, or we have to disclose what we have heard, just like we would, just like you did when you go to a conference with them.
Okay, so it's the same as it's been, you'd have to disclose it. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Wait, I want to clarify, so we could go meet again?
No, I would not suggest any ex-party contacts with anyone.
Got it, so it is different.
Yeah, we've, we have an item, we have an item that's a closed public hearing and it's set for deliberation.
We just had two different, we just heard two different things.
Right. Right.
I'm confused.
At least we're consistent.
Can I summarize it for you? You don't like us ever to even get close to Brown Act, so we shouldn't do it, because we shouldn't do it.
I would suggest not having ex-party contacts.
But Trevor, what is the, what is the Brown Act section you're thinking about? I'm, I'm totally lost on-
We have a, we have a, we have an item with a, with, as a public hearing, we've closed it, it's set for deliberation at this point, and at that point in time, further input is not appropriate in next party context.
What if they continue the public hearing?
Well, if we reopen another public hearing, it could be another, a different situation. But at this point in time, like my advice to you is-
But let's follow the different, let's try that, because we're trying to figure out how to get everybody the answers they want.
Which you can submit to staff, which can be brought to-
It doesn't work, it takes three, you can't reach people, it'll take us, you know, months to do it that way.
That's my advice, so.
We got your advice.
But so for practice then, just send your input through staff, it'll come to us as you get it. Don't wait for anyone to call you, you know, just send it through to-
Oh no, we will, it just-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, copy it to Kathleen, she, she gets it out quick.
All right.
I mean, she gets it out within hours usually.
I just thought if he had another way to do it, which would be, he doesn't want to do it.
Now, can I ask that, if we continue it to March 5th, can it be a single-issue meeting, or can we have a special meeting? Because that's going to be one long meeting. This one wasn't short, and we only got halfway through it.
We didn't even, you know, barely.
Or I'd rather have a special meeting than be here until midnight trying to decide this one.
Why don't we, I, I would suggest continuing it to March 5th, and then as we get closer to that date, we evaluate if we think we're going to be ready to roll. And if we're not, then we'll poll you about a special meeting date or something like that.
I, I move we continue till March 5th.
Well, you had a motion, and it's been seconded already. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Seeing none, it passes.
Move, we adjourn.
Meeting adjourned, all in favor?
Before you adjourn, could I, I just, I'm so confused about this ex-party communications. It doesn't make sense.